Good morning. It's 9:02. And I, oh, I'm muted?
Progress.
No.
Nope.
Okay, good morning. We need to start our meeting now. Thank you so much for joining us. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner DeBonne is with us on Zoom this morning, so we can see him.
Good morning.
Yes, thank you. Do we have any citizen input in the room? I don't believe I had anything turned in. Okay, is there any citizen input on Zoom? Thank you, Stephanie. All right. I did just want to make a small comment that I did meet with a citizen of Bend, Samir Dean, yesterday, and I know he's meeting with a lot of people. And, you know, we're getting a lot of really positive comments about homelessness, and I just want to thank everyone for really caring and looking for solutions. So, thank you so much. If you haven't met with Mr. Dean yet, I would suggest you do that. He's out there, and he's incredibly persistent, so I think that's what it takes. We have a consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. I'll second it.
Discussion, Commissioner Chang?
Nope.
Commissioner?
Just to acknowledge a couple half FTE for this fiscal year. We're just acknowledging that. They're both funded, obviously, but we're in that spot where we're, you know, adding FTE during the year as, you know, we seem to be growing, so just acknowledging it.
Yes, the good news was they only totaled one, so each was a half.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take the vote. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, our first action item is the American Plan Funding Update, Rescue Plan Update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Munn, Deschutes County Finance Office. Today we have a few items to cover under the ARPA update. One of those is going to be a brief presentation from the City of Bend. Carolyn Egan is here to talk about a homeless services proposal, and then also revisiting the request from the facilities and/or the court department for rent for the circuit court facilities out at the fairgrounds that needed to be displaced because of COVID. And then also a consideration of the South County Emergency Vehicle that was a holdover from the December 15th meeting. And, of course, as always, we have the list of eligible projects in the packet for you to consider as well. And then we also want to give you an update before we close out on the status of the final So with that, I'll turn it over to Carolyn.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me. I think I want to just start by thanking you for, as Commissioner or Chair Adair mentioned, all of the work that Deschutes County has been contributing to as we continue to address the growing number of Central Oregonians who are experiencing homelessness. So, thank you for the work that we've done together and that you've done independently. We appreciate it. I'm here really today just to ask very specifically about an earmark. Back in June, you received a letter from the city council asking you for 1.5 million in county ARPA funds to be allocated specifically to service providers who could run some shelter operations for us. You know that we have over 1,000 people in Central Oregon experiencing homelessness, and in the city of Bend, we have really fewer than 300 shelter beds, which is an unusual mix. Much more typical would be that we would have 500 or 600 or even 700 shelter beds available, and we just don't have enough. So, the commitment from the county commission to set aside some ARPA funds so that we could provide those shelter operations, especially given the non-congregate shelter operations that are really necessary to protect all people but to reduce the spread of COVID-19. And we, at that time, the county commission reasonably said, yep, 750 sounds right to us. We don't have a ton of experience with shelter operations, and so we'd like to see what comes online, and then we would entertain a conversation about the second 750. So, I wanted to give you a bit of an update on what's... Go ahead, Commissioner.
I got a question. Yes, okay, thank you. You mentioned the number of beds, and I think you said 300 or 500. Have we had more beds in the past, or you're saying that we should grow into that number?
What I was trying to explain was that it's unusual to have that high number of community members experiencing homelessness and that few number of shelter beds available. And so, when you look at comparable communities, particularly outside of Oregon, you see a much higher number of shelter beds and a variety of shelter beds that's closer. Now, unusually, it'd be very unusual to have the same number of shelter beds as you have humans who are experiencing homelessness. But the really big difference between that over 1,000 and the 300 is what? And what we've traditionally had in Central Oregon is winter shelter beds. We do winter warming shelters really, really well, but we don't have the number of year-round shelter beds. And those are some of the things that we are proposing to bring online together between not just the city of Bend and the county, but in this specific situation, the city of Bend and the county. So, one of the things, we've done a number of things since we made this request. So, the request came in late June, that asking the county to set aside 1.5 million, and the city of Bend would set aside the equal amount, if not more, of 1.5 million in our local funds for the...so we would have at least $3 million set aside for operations of shelters. Since then, we've purchased two buildings for shelters, as you're aware. So, we were a turnkey awardee, and we were able to purchase the hotel on Division Street, and we were also able to purchase the building where Shepherd's House is operating, the Second Street Shelter. That allowed us to very quickly have the first year-round low-barrier shelter that's in the city of Bend, there serving at least 80 people a night, and on the coldest nights, closer to 100. And there's more demand than what Shepherd's House can provide, demonstrated by the warming shelter that had to be opened at First Presbyterian Church again this winter when there were not enough shelter beds at Shepherd's House. So, we've also been working diligently. I mean, The Bulletin and The Source have been covering it really well for us in terms of identifying places for outdoor shelters, places for other types of safe places for people to stay until they can get into the housing that they need. It's been a challenge. Between the city and the county, we do not have publicly-owned property that is really adequate or suitable for outdoor camping, and we've really had to now rely on both private property owners and our other public agency partners to be able to identify that land. At the same time, identifying experienced service providers. I think just to the county's point, when we made the original request, we don't have a lot of experience running these types of operations in our region, in our county. And the search to find service providers to even make those camping places or make those shelters a safe place for people to go and find shelter for a night or a week or a month has been a challenge. What we have been able to successfully do in the last couple of weeks is that we opened up two requests for proposals. One was to run a navigation center, and the other was for the operator for the outdoor shelter. The navigation center is, it is a shelter, but it's one that's open during the day. If you visit Shepherd's House, you'll know that they're able to accommodate people from evening. They provide them a meal at night. They have a place to sleep, but in the morning, they have to go. There's not a place for people to stay. What we have is sort of informal congregating in and around the shelter because there are people who would like to be inside and like to be able to access services. The navigation center will open up that day facility so that we have a place for people to go on the coldest days, the hottest days, and the day that they decide it's right for them to access services. So, opening that navigation center, at this point, we have an intent to award to one service provider, and we're going to negotiate a contract to be able to open up the navigation center at the Second Street location.
When do you project that you may be able to do that, Carolyn?
To open the day center? We hope this spring. It's, we will know a little bit more after we sit down with the, with Shepherd's House to figure out what that conversion time looks like from their current operations to be able to rearrange the space so that they can open up the day center. Commissioner DeBonne, I think, put his hand up again.
I was rubbing my nose. That's...
Okay. Hey.
A likely story. Maybe you had a question and now you don't want to ask it.
Well, one thought, though, I could, I could step. So, one of my thoughts is, we probably, so this is an ask for the community. The goal is to not have people in tents. You know, I had a discussion with one of the state representatives. We were talking about it, and they mentioned, you know, down in the valley area, well, we make sure that there's places for tents. Here in the high desert, we probably shouldn't be thinking that people are going to set up in a tent, and that's, it's just so important. You know, I mean, these cold nights can be deadly. The hot days can be deadly, obviously, and any day, we can go from 100 degrees during the day and 32 at night also, even in the summertime. So, I'm just saying, it's one of those guiding star principles in Deschutes County, in the high desert, on the east side of the Cascades, probably shouldn't be thinking of people being allowed to be set up in tents. You know, there's some beautiful camping opportunities out there, but for a housing option, it's probably not a goal we should be doing. And I'm referring to the, you know, the places where we may be setting up managed camps or whatever's going to be proposed.
Yep, and I think, I, actually, Commissioner DeBonne, I think you're reflecting the attitude and the proposals from our service providers. So, when we set out to have, started these conversations, we thought managed camps, the ones you may see in Eugene or other parts of the state, would work. What we're hearing from service providers is they would like something that's closer to what's been opened at Veterans Village or what's being built at St. Vincent de Paul, and less similar to what's being, what you see in other parts of the state. So, I think that your statements really not only reflect your constituents, but also reflect the service providers in your community. Because what we've seen from, go ahead.
Oh, and then also, I was really pushing down the path of a campground, privately owned campground. KOA was out there years ago. It's not there anymore, but let's look for that next one, too. So, this, I'm kind of jumping topics on what you're presenting today, but if we had a campground, which is an RV-type campground, somebody might try to, you know, temporarily be in a tent, but that's an opportunity. A market-rate campground, if somebody needs to be sponsored in a spot, then they could be camping in the campground. Or people that are just coming through Central Oregon, the van life, the big RV rigs, we probably need that, some, a buffer area for people to be, the campground. We don't have campgrounds, which is interesting. There are some, but they're all, they're fully booked these days.
So, I agree. I think that what we're, why we're here today was, one, really, to ask you to continue to earmark not just the 750 that was committed to shelter operations, but the additional 750 so that we do have the 1.5 that's earmarked, so that we can continue to pursue exactly what Commissioner DeBonne is saying, is we had this one idea that we thought would work. We've done a bunch of work in the last six to eight months to learn that there's a, that idea is evolving, exactly as our constituents have been asking for it, too. And so, we would like the 1.5 million, it will continue to be matched by the 1.5 million from the city of Bend, if not more, to earmark that for shelter operations. So, that could be shelter operations at two of the existing shelters. That could be shelter operations at the outdoor shelter proposals that we've received, and when I'm saying outdoor shelters, we originally started talking about managed camps, but now you start thinking about outdoor shelters looking more like Veterans Village or what's being built at St. Vincent de Paul with some sort of structure. So, it could be a kind of a hut. It could be a pallet structure. It could be an RV. It could be a yurt. I mean, there, it's more than the tent that you would buy at REI or at Sportsman's Warehouse. And so, but I think Commissioner DeBonne alludes to something that's important, is that there could be scenarios where individuals come with their tent because that's what they have, and we're matching them with more permanent structures so that they can begin that road back to permanent housing. One of the things, though, that I don't want to leave out of the conversation is the input that we're receiving from our service providers. So, I talked about the proposals that we've received that really do look at a more, at more structures, pallet structures or huts or whatever. But we still have daily input from service providers, those who are doing outreach with those who are experiencing homelessness. And that move from their tent, maybe with their pet and the handful of people that they live nearby, to an inside location may still be a bridge too far for some of our community members. And so, we still have an obligation to meet them where they are. That's where the navigation center comes in. Maybe they're not comfortable sleeping inside at night, but they are comfortable coming inside and accessing some services, and that begins the conversation with those community members about what's the best path for them. That may be getting them back to family in Idaho. That may be getting them back with their kids who are in another part of the state. So, it's not always a series of just getting them in a tent that's a safe place. We also have loads and loads of people who are living in their car right now throughout the region and providing, continuing to provide them with safe places to park their car is absolutely essential. When we provide safe places for people to park their car, there's also some cost. And so, we would like to be able to allow some of this 1.5 plus 1.5, $3 million to be, continued to be allocated to those case management services, the portable toilets, the hand-washing stations, the potable water that's being distributed to those safe parking locations, especially as we continue to have more property owners tell us...
Carolyn, how many spots do we have for car parking today?
Right now, we have six. And the, of the 11 families or 12 families that have participated in that, all but one family has found stable housing.
All but one?
One, yep. And that actually is, that's one of those cases where then that individual's not ready to go into permanent housing. And so, there's just more of a journey for that family with their case manager and their services. So, really asking, please continue to earmark the 1.5 million. We continue to earmark ours, and we see more projects coming online, whether they're small, just like the safe parking, three spots here, three spots here, medium size, another Veterans Village or similar type development, and then larger in terms of a more traditional shelter, very likely non-congregate shelter experience as we continue to do everything we can to reduce the spread of COVID-19.
So, just thinking, you know, 1.5 million was kind of, you know, defined. 750 was pre-authorized. I truly think of the 750 as still available. We just recently, you know, helped invest in the St. Vincent place.
Yes, thank you.
So, that's not even out of those dollars. It's, I mean, it's the same pool of dollars, but not out of that allocation. So, I mean, we're there. We're helping. We're, let's make it happen. At this point, you know, what are, are there specific, like the spreadsheet of expected expenses or just kind of the, you know, the willingness to be partners, I guess? What's the ask today?
The ask is to continue to earmark at the 1.5, not just the 750.
Yeah.
And that...
That's the point.
And a continued conversation and continued opportunities to report out to you on how those dollars would be expended, and just more information. I think Commissioner DeBonne, that's what we're looking for, is I'm hearing from my constituents, these are the expectations of my constituents. How is your proposal, city of Bend, going to continue to meet the expectations of my constituents? Those types of checks and conversations, and also just continued input from our service providers on what's the best service that we should be providing.
And if I'm not mistaken, providing us with this very detailed list of completed and in-progress projects gives us an indication of where some of those dollars that are coming from the county ARPA funds might be invested.
Absolutely. So, we're going to do our best to get money from everyone else, as we have been. So, when we bought Second Street, we did it with state ARPA. When we bought Division Street, we did it with turnkey dollars. Our effort is to get money from everywhere else first so that we can open up those shelters. But what you all know with these types of funding is they're saying, that's great. We're ready to put our money in. Where's your local match? And why is it just one partner? Why don't you have two? And so, trying to really make sure we have the foundation to continue to secure those outside funds with both having a city and a county partner.
So, has the turnkey project opened?
The turnkey project has been, we always had tenants in there. Turnkey, you'll remember, we were the, like, the last city to get that award.
I know the first one didn't work, and then you had to get another one, yes.
Oh, boy.
Yes.
There's been a lot of learning, Commissioner Adair.
Yes. Hey, it's hard when you're buying something that's used.
Yeah. Exactly, especially these days. But we, then we entered very quickly after we purchased that property. We actually entered into a contract with County Public Health to hold those rooms for COVID isolation in the account, in the instance that we needed them. So, we did not open them up to the general public because we were, we were holding them for that purpose. We now are beginning a conversation with Neighbor Impact, who's your partner on the COVID isolation, to try to figure out how to best meet the needs of those who need hotel rooms because they're COVID-positive, and how to continue to meet the needs of at-risk community members who are experiencing homelessness by using the rooms at Bend Value Inn. So, I would say the rooms have always been in use, but not for sort of the most public purpose at this time, and we're hoping to change that very shortly. We will then have to do renovations at that hotel to be able to run the turnkey project permanently, and we would love to keep you updated as we make those decisions and set, get more clear on that timing. But the intent is to open up rooms to the general public as soon as we can in the coming weeks.
Carolyn, how many beds will be able to be at that project?
There's 28 rooms at Bend Value Inn, and depending on family size, so there could, we could have 28 rooms of couples, in which case we would have 56 beds, or we could have 28 rooms of individuals, in which case we would have 28 beds. So, we're really estimating, we, you hear us saying 40 beds, so that we're sort of hitting that middle where, based on family size, whether it's two adults or a parent and a child, but the tenants that we have in there now are all, if it's a single person, it's a couple, it's a family. So, just three rooms and three different types of families, we really know it could run the gamut. And then the goal with the navigation center is to continue to have those 80 beds online, and then we continue to look at other properties to bring additional beds online. One of the things that we experience, just as we've unfortunately continued to bump up against, is the capacity of those in our community who could actually provide the onsite management and the case management for the families who are there. And so, we're really excited to be able to continue to work with Shepherd's House, and then we're really excited to build out, to build out non-congregate shelter management capacity with Neighbor Impact.
Okay.
So, back when we made the 750-750 split, my primary concern at that point was just not having enough specifics about where the full 1.5 million would go with this list. I feel very confident that, I feel very confident in the city of Bend's efforts to develop this wide range, this continuum of shelter and transitional housing services. And I would, at this point, support moving the, you know, currently on our spreadsheet, we have 750,000 in Board of Commissioners approved, and we have 750,000 under outstanding requests. And so, I, I think it's appropriate at this point to move the 750,000 in outstanding request into approved and just make those funds available to the city of Bend to deploy on these various projects. I can make that a motion if...
Please.
If we're ready. So, I move allocation of $750,000 of additional county ARPA funds to city of Bend partnership homeless shelter and transitional housing projects.
Okay, is there a second? You'll second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay.
So, just acknowledging, you know, we're growing our capacity right now. This is the time of need. COVID and the economy changing and inflation, a lot of big things happening. But any individual that's out there, I'd like, I'd welcome them. Please, you know, participate in the economy. There may be jobs available, and I know that there's all kinds of reasons, and this is a real touchy subject because people's minds...
And many of the people who are homeless are actually working people.
You don't need to correct me. You don't need to correct me. I was just trying to make a statement. I'm just saying, people, please join the economy. Let's get some stable housing. You know, let's do good things as a community, and I'm just acknowledging, it's not us and them. It's us. It's all of us. So, thank you.
And I would like to make a comment that we would be, if with this vote, we would have less than $4 million less of our ARPA funds available. So, I believe we've already allocated 33.5 million. So, it, you know, and we haven't gotten those checks yet. The second check will not come until May. So, anyway, just want that to go on the record. I think it's important to acknowledge. Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair votes yes.
Yeah, now that we voted, I will also say that one of the things we're, one of the things we're learning through this process is how massive the need is and how limited the existing structures, you know, the existing indoor shelter that we have is, how limited the land we have available is. And, you know, for that, for those reasons, I, it is definitely not my first preference to see people living outside in tents. But I think it's also unrealistic to believe that we're going to make outside tent homelessness disappear in the near foreseeable future. So, while we are working to ramp up indoor shelter, ramp up transitional housing, there, you know, we're talking, you know, if there's a, if there's a deficit of hundreds and hundreds of spaces, people are going to be living outside. And so, I do see a continuing need for some kind of outdoor shelter opportunities for people. And if we can build, you know, 500 tiny shelters... And if we can build, you know, 500 tiny shelters in villages in, you know, in a year, that would be wonderful. But if we can't, then we also need to have a place where people are allowed, allowed to be, where they can function in a structured community with rules and management, so that we do not have, you know, the chaos in our community that so many people are concerned about. So, you know, I just want to flag that I still, I'm not convinced that there's not a need for, you know, outdoor shelter for people, you know, people living in tents. We certainly need more safe parking spaces. I mean, the fact that there's only six in, you know, a community of 100,000 people is, I think we're, there's a missed opportunity there. And, you know, maybe there's, there's a better way for us to be asking, you know, property owners with parking space to step up. I would personally like to see the county step up and, you know, offer some of those safe parking spaces. But we're not going to be able to get all of the people under a roof for a few years, is, you know, my best, my best understanding of the situation. So we need to figure out what, you know, what ways we can support people who are living in an old RV that they're nursing along or in a tent, until we can get them to the right places and provide them that support, so that they can stabilize their lives, so that they can engage fully in the economy and fully in our community. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Chang.
I just wanted to say one more thing, and thank you, and say we'd love to come back at your invitation to give you another update on how things are moving along. So thank you so much for having me.
Yes, we'd love to have that update, please. Thank you for all that documentation.
All right. Thank you. So next up is, next on the agenda today for the ARP update is, in your packet is, there's a memo from Eric Crop regarding the Circuit Court use of Fair Expo Center. And Eric's going to join us here if there's any questions that the commissioners might have.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. In December, we discussed this request, and the board had additional questions about the Circuit Court and their plan use of the North Sister Building at Fair and Expo. I reached out to the Circuit Court, and they explained that they continue to use the North Sister Building for jury trials. The Circuit Court has two types of jury trials. They have six-person jury trials and 12-person jury trials. They're currently only holding the 12-person jury trials at the North Sister Building or at the Fair and Expo Center. The Circuit Court plans to continue using or request use of the North Sister Building through the pandemic until the pandemic subsides. Once that, once the pandemic subsides, they are still requesting use of the, of the Fair and Expo Center to assist with capacity. As, as you know, the court has added two new judges. The two new judge positions start within the next month. So they would like to continue use of the North Sister Building to help with that capacity. In terms of the request, on page 163 of your packet is, is the line item under Public Health. The Circuit Court item is pulled out there. In your packet, the total amount is $428,754. We could actually back out last fiscal year's costs. Last fiscal year, the county incurred costs of $159,109. Those costs were covered by CARES Act funds and/or County General Fund. So then that leaves this fiscal year, the projected cost is $131,478. Next fiscal year, the projected cost is $138,167. Another thing for the board to consider is, at the point that COVID has subsided, if the court is allowed to continue to use the Fair and Expo Center, the county could use other funds or court expansion funds to cover those costs. So just a consideration for the board. The cost right now is, there's a line item in the county's budget for the court facility costs. As the board knows, the county is responsible for the court facilities, and that, you know, currently we charge electricity and any other facility costs to that, to that fund, which is, which is really a subfund of the general fund. So any costs that aren't covered by ARPA or others will essentially be covered by the county's general fund. If, if the board doesn't want to designate ARPA funds for next fiscal year, then probably through the budget process, we'll need to account for these costs in the county's budget. Are there any questions at this point?
So actually, you're asking for 269,000?
Yes.
400, or 645?
Yes. That's the exact number I wrote down. So I'm in, if my number and your number matches up, we're in good shape.
I don't know. I did it in my head, so that's always scary. Okay. All right. So, and exactly, Eric, can you say, did it come out of CARES last year, or did it come out of County General? Or what was the spread last year?
It was a mix. I don't have the breakdown.
Okay. It was a mix, so.
Yeah.
I mean, even with, if COVID, let's say, completely subsided, you know, because what is it? We've had over 32,000 people now in Dishutts County that have had COVID, I believe, somewhere up there. Even if COVID subsided, because of our two additional judges, which will start the month of February, we do need this courtroom capacity. Is that not true?
Yes, the court is requesting it. I mean, if they weren't, if COVID subsided and they weren't able to use the Fair and Expo Center, they would make other arrangements, but it would impact the number of cases they can get through the courthouse.
Okay.
I don't have a question, but I have a thought and a comment. With the recent revelation that we are not necessarily excluded from asking for state funding for our courthouse, our courthouse project, I think that the expenditures that we've made, above and beyond operating the regular courthouse, you know, i.e., what we've spent on the fairgrounds, you know, facility capacity for, you know, to support the functionings of our Circuit Court, that it would be, it would actually be pretty reasonable for us to make a submission for state funding. And just kind of offer that as, offer that as background. You know, we have, you know, here's, here's financially what we have done, you know, from, you know, particularly from our general fund or from our, really, you know, our CARES Act funding or from this ARPA funding, that, you know, we've taken discretionary funding that we've had to support court, court facilities. And, you know, we have this very large project to make, you know, to expand our court facilities, and it would be, you know, I think it's very reasonable for us to kind of show them those numbers and say, could you contribute this much to our courthouse expansion project?
So we would take, we would take the money we've, we've spent and ask the state?
Yeah. Make this, make this, make this funding allocation now, make whatever general fund, you know, allocation we need to now. And then, you know, just, but just kind of demonstrate to them, you know, what we have, you know, what we've done with discretionary funding to support, you know, full operation, the fullest possible operation and continued operation of our courthouse during the COVID pandemic and during this, you know, this remodel project. So, you know, just as a, as a, as an indication, there was some discussion in here about, you know, at a certain point in time, just rolling the costs of using the North Sisters Building into the construction, you know, the construction-
Yeah.
-budget for the courthouse expansion. I really do see the two things as very, very connected.
Okay. We can certainly make a note of that, and then at the, at the appropriate time, ask the state.
Because I know we haven't, we hadn't decided yet whether we were going to make a request for some of that court, you know, state courthouse expansion money. And, you know, I think that this is a, this is a good, a good argument for us to do that.
Yeah, we can make a note of that.
Mr. DeBoeck, did you have any comments?
So I, yeah, I mean, I really like the idea of empowering our, our new judges to have some space to be able to run these trial hearings. 12-person trials is, you know, it's a good fit. We've learned that it works in the time of COVID, and we're going to be building that building in the future. So I'm supportive either way, you know, however we get there. If we fund it for this fiscal year and then bring it back around next year, I mean, I'd be supportive next year also. So that maybe means that we would support both fiscal years is where I'd be at.
With the 269,000, then that number?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that seems to make sense. Do I have a motion from anyone?
As I say, I don't have that number in front of me, but I do-
It's 269,645, I believe?
That's correct.
And that's the amount I'll move approval for court operations at the fairgrounds.
Okay. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I guess I would also just say-
It's going to be a real interesting discussion with the courts, I mean, the state for court funding. It's good, we're just like, make a presence through AOC, make a presence. We did a great job, you know, getting the next judges, you know, during the short session, during the long session next year, we'll, we'll all be involved. And just keep reminding them that we got big capital expenses, and please be a partner with us.
Okay.
Yeah. I would also just say, I, we, you know, we've, we've received a lot of requests for ARPA funding. You know, I'm, one of the lenses I'm trying to look at these through is, you know, what was the intention behind the American Rescue Plan? And the intention behind the American Rescue Plan was, you know, helped us contain COVID and help us recover from it and, you know, function and operate during COVID. And this seems like, this, to me, seems like an entirely appropriate request, you know, in that context of COVID response, COVID recovery, and, you know, continuing our fundamental operations during COVID, so.
Okay. Calling for the vote, Commissioner DeBoeck?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
All right. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Okay. Commissioners, next on the list is consideration of the Lapine Rural Fire Protection District request. And that was an item that was included in an email that was sent out after the agenda item was posted. So you should have that as well.
Okay.
I did speak to the fire chief yesterday or the day before, forget when. And, you know, the justification is truly just the number of runs per day and the distance of those runs, you know, 35, 30 miles or so, or wherever they're picking somebody up each way, so 70 miles or so round trip, multiple times a day. These rigs are running all the time. And the request, because I was trying to really get grounded on, would we, you know, buy a fire district an ambulance? And why would we do it for this district and not other districts? But it's really the miles that get put on these rigs. You know, they, they, they just need maintenance, and then they, they wear out, and they, they put a, you know, maybe the cab, the box on a new foundation, but it takes a two-year lead time. So having the next one in the queue is, is the idea here at this time.
And what is their ask? The amount of money they're asking for?
So the ask is for $280,000. One component of that is the Medic Quick Response Unit. That's what Commissioner DeBoeck was referring to. That's $200,000. And the second piece of that is the acquisition of four Stryker Power Gurneys at $20,000 each for a total of $80,000, for a grand total of $280,000.
Okay. Any other comments?
Do we happen to have a Jerry Hubbard or someone from the district in virtual attendance? I do have some questions. And I have some concerns about this request.
Jerry Hubbard?
So, you know, pulling up to the 90,000-foot level, we have seen, we've worked really closely with Lapine Rural Fire over the last year to provide them access to additional, additional contract resources, you know, you know, up through, through the ASA administrative structure. I have also seen that Lapine Rural Fire received over $600,000 for equipment in a federal earmark, you know, one of those congressionally-designated spending requests, which they must have received through Senator Wyden or Senator Merkley, because Congressman Bentz wasn't, wasn't taking congressionally-designated spending requests last year. And so, you know, the, the, the impression or the picture that emerges for me is, this is a district where, you know, the constituents of the district want better service. They want more service. They want faster response times. But the district is, you know, doing everything they can, and, you know, I appreciate that they're, they're doing everything they can to figure out how to find the resources to provide those, that higher level of service that their constituents are demanding without, without looking at their tax rates. And I think at a certain point, that, that is fundamentally something that they, they need to do. If, if, if the people in the district, if the people of the district want a higher level of service, then the district needs to evaluate whether it's time to raise tax rates, to provide that service. So I'm, I, I mentioned with the last request that I, it seemed entirely COVID-driven, you know, the reason that the courts, our circuit court, needed the three, the North Sister Building at the fairgrounds. This is, in my mind, a problem that predates COVID. This is, this is a fundamental issue of imbalance of service demand and, and tax base. So, you know, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to patch that with ARPA funding. And I've definitely heard the argument that with all the development in Lapine, it will, you know, that the, the size of the tax base, you know, that the number of properties will catch up, and the tax base will increase over time. But again, we've been doing all these things over the last year to try to get the level of resources to a point where it meets the service demands of constituents, and it hasn't been enough. And I, so I, I see this request in the, in the same context. And at a certain point, you got to ask the district, you know, whether, you know, to meet their basic responsibilities to their district constituents, whether they need to look at their tax rates.
Greg, is this an allowable ARPA expense per the rules?
It is.
As we see them now? So it is allowable? And on a comment on a different note, I, the day after Thanksgiving, I drove from Sisters all the way to Lakeview. Seven, it was at least a seven-hour drive, and I never saw one police vehicle that whole drive. I mean, and as a public official, I kept thinking, oh, my gosh, what if something happened? You know, we have South County, and then you go on out, you know, Highway 31, and it's, it was really, I felt like, it was kind of, it was a frightening experience to think that where are our, where are those officers that usually, you see at least one or something? I mean, but all those hours I was driving, never saw any. And I was just thinking, like, I know their services, they, Lapine Fire serves that South, you know, Christmas Valley, that area. I'm not sure how far they go, but I know that truly, it's, it's part of their region at points in time when nobody else can get there. So I feel like- of their region at points in time when nobody else can get there. So I feel like there is a deficit in that area.
There's no doubt that there's a deficit, but what the, what the fix is to, to address that deficit is the question. And if we are, if we're throwing the doors open and saying, hey, you know, every fire district in the, in the county, you know, like, tell us what you need to bump up your level of service, we're going to get a whole lot of additional ARPA requests.
Well, we're, we're almost out of allocation. Commissioner DeBonne, did you want to add anything?
So those, those powered gurneys, I didn't do my homework on it. One of the assumptions would be that that's going to empower the staff to not have to do some heavy lifting at some moments. As I say, I didn't do my homework on that, but I think that's what that is. The vehicle I did do my homework on, I just happened to ask the chiefs very specifically about that. You know, as I say, why would we buy a vehicle for a district and not all districts? So I've already kind of thought through that process. And it was pointed out the distance to, you know, the emergency room. I'd be supportive of this request. This is a one-time request. It's, yeah, it's just a point in time. The CMT resources, private resources coming in behind Lapine Fire is expected to be in February. They're working on the hardware and the protocol, or radio hardware and the protocols to get them up to speed. So they're not online yet, but maybe four or five weeks from now is my understanding. And I spoke to that operator also recently. So as I say, I mean, I'm supportive of this. This is just kind of those one-time special requests.
I mean, if we're, if we're framing this as a one-time special request, I would be happy, I would be happy to support the, the Lapine Fire in making another congressionally designated spending earmark request. They were successful last time and, you know, they could be successful the next time. But since we have so little ARPA funding left, I, you know, I, I, I don't think that this is the most strategic and most appropriate way to spend those funds.
So possibly to get us off the center here, I'll make a motion to fully support this at $280,000 and see if there's a second.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Chang will let second it?
I won't second.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it as chair. Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
No.
And the chair votes yes.
Good discussion about that one. Thank you.
Well, we're letting them know that, you know, they need to look at their rate. And then again, you have to think about the impact. The income is lower in South County, is, but it seems like, you know, it is moving up. And, yeah, they'll have to realize that they're going to have to readjust that at some point in the near future. Greg, is there anything additional?
Thank you, commissioners. Next on the list would be if there's interest is a review of the spreadsheets that's in your packet, any of the items on there that you'd like to discuss or need further information on or next steps.
We haven't heard back yet from COIC, right, regarding how many applications they actually got because the deadline was on the 7th? Did they get any additional deadlines? I know we asked them to do the Lapine Senior Center, I believe. They were going to hopefully get their application in by Friday?
I don't have a number yet.
I know. I haven't seen that either. Okay, all right. Is there anything else you want to pull up today?
I also had a, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. They, so, you know, kind of beyond the, the question that Chair Dare asked, do we, there was a point where we, COIC was reporting back to us how many had, how many requests had come in so far? And they had a ballpark estimate of, of how much that would add up to. Can you remind me what that number was?
I think ballpark was a, probably a better term than what it really was, because I think we'd, we'd only received just, I think Dan Emerson might be on the line. He might have those figures in front of him. But we'd only received, we hadn't received all of them. And the application period hadn't even closed yet. So we were taking that information and basing some projection. Dan, do you have any of that data there in front of you?
I missed what Commissioner Chang, specifically what data?
So last, one of the last updates we gave the board was an update on where we were with COIC. It was a week or so ago with COIC, the COIC Small Business Nonprofit Business Assistance.
Certainly.
They had opened.
Certainly.
Okay.
Can you give us those numbers, Ken?
We, we had, had at that point 170 different businesses apply. We were expecting to have 200 by the time of close. We had reviewed 30 of those 170 and already had over $600,000 that were eligible for ARPA. And we had budgeted 1.5 million from ARPA. So, yes, if you look at it that way, we, we could potentially go over that amount, depending on how you want to fund that. And also, it's taken quite a lot of staff time at COIC. So we may be potentially expecting a small increase in expenses on, on the contract side, but we're not sure yet. But we are comparing tax returns against 21 income statements and calling each business individually, or COIC is, and they're doing a great job. But that's pretty much where we're at right now. Any other specific questions there?
Could you re, resummarize that number for me? So 170 applications, after looking at 30, the request amount was, how many hundred thousand?
600,000.
600,000, just from the first 30 that you looked at?
In and around that range, yes.
So if you extrapolate that, that could be up to 3 million? If that's like 20%, something like that? Okay.
If it was to keep going at that rate, yeah, 3.5, $3 million potentially, if you were to fund every business wholly, make them whole essentially, as opposed to a percentage or something. And both Commissioner Dare and Commissioner Chang are correct. It looks like after those last two approvals, we do actually end up with, should end up with 38.4 million. So we do have 3.6 million left at this point, unbudgeted, I should say.
So my, my other question about this, this, this program or this category, so we have this Small Business and Nonprofit Assistance, you know, category on our spreadsheet. And there were a number of businesses and a number of nonprofits who made individual requests before we put out this more comprehensive offering. And I just wanted to make sure that all of them have been funneled into the, the program being administered by COIC at this point. And, you know, because it, that'll, that helps me look at that long list and feel like, you know, within the 170, the applications so far were, were covered.
Yes. I believe they have, you know, Greg's reached out. We both worked with the nonprofits. The nonprofits have been aware of this for some time. I don't actually think that all nonprofits, like, in, in terms of the chambers reached, decided to apply, but they certainly were aware of it. And I have seen some of the businesses that emailed the county frequently, just on the list of 30 that we went over. So I'm, I feel fairly confident. And I know that Greg and I both made an effort to let those businesses and nonprofits know about this opportunity.
Great, thank you.
So if it was actually 3.5, we might need another 1.6 million to fund it. But Greg, I did remember, you know, that $1 million that doesn't show up here, that was ARPA funds from Representative Bonham for Terabon. And I'm told, what, that we cannot spend that on the road. So it's something that perhaps we can help with that wastewater system that's on our list, correct?
The, yes, the wastewater.
Apparently we need to fill out some application for that funding.
Right. And we are looking into that right now, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have an update since our correspondence a week or so ago.
Okay, okay. Well, that's good, though. Thank you, Representative Bonham, for that allocation for Deschutes County.
The, the other kind of big picture question I wanted to ask was about the Public Health Response Contingency that we reserved. Struggling to find it now.
Yes, it's on line number, there's two of them actually. It's on line number 71.
Yeah.
Unintended Consequences and then on line 79.
Okay. So there were those two, and then there was the, on line 82, we had, we had allocated 2 million for temporary staffing for COVID-19 response and outreach. And then we had Delta and Omicron. So I, 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 I wanted to understand better the, the Public Health Response Contingency and the Health Unintended Consequences. What, what were the, what were the intentions behind those? And how are we doing in terms of, in terms of spend down on those? And because the, the 2 million temporary staffing for COVID-19 response, you know, it, it seems pretty likely that we're going to blow through that, just because when we made that allocation, you know, nobody knew that Delta and Omicron were coming.
That's right.
And we certainly have, you know, we, we worked those dollars pretty hard.
So, so initially, back when we first started having this conversation, it may have been in June, the, and we didn't have, we hadn't gone out for full requests for project proposals on any of the categories that were potentially eligible under the interim final rule. In fact, at that point, we weren't sure really even, the interim, the interim final rule had just come out. So we weren't really clear on that. But as I recall, the board made a decision that until we had more information on the IFR, that, that you wanted to set aside some buckets of money so that you wouldn't spend those right away. And these were two of those. There were a couple of others. 1.5 million was set aside also for the Small Business Ask that we've just been discussing. So they were just put there as placeholders in the interim until a future decision came along to actually spend the dollars.
Okay. But so we didn't, we didn't, we didn't express any intention for specifically what those dollar, what this, what the 1.5 and 1.5?
Really nothing beyond just the title of the set aside.
Is that, is that, that $3 million still sitting there then?
It is.
Okay, it's sitting there.
And it can be, and, and you can reappropriate it however you wish.
That's part, that's part of our, that's part of our now, what was it, 35, 34 that we have?
It is.
Already allocated. Oh, that's good to know. Do, I, I mean, I guess what I would, I would like to know from the, from Health Services, whether, you know, the, the 2 million that we, that we set aside for temp staffing, whether they need, whether they're anticipating more need beyond that, you know, as a, as a first priority for those funds. You've given the kind of broad titles that we gave to those two $1.5 million set asides. There is actually a project, another proposal that just came in recently that I think actually is maybe responsive, which is the, the request from COCC and that consortium for a local public health workforce development project, you know, basically to, replenish our pipeline of public health workers after, you know, COVID has wreaked havoc on, you know, on those, on the poor people who were on the front lines during this, you know, during the last two years. So I'm guessing that we all haven't had a chance to, to review that one at, you know, at this, at this moment. But I'd like to flag that if those $3 million are available for public health purposes, that we take a close look at that one during our next ARPA allocation discussion.
And Commissioner Chang, I believe you're referring to line item 69 for 191,548?
Yes, yeah. And this is a, this is an idea that came up at our County Public Health Advisory Board. And COCC, you know, brainstormed this with the, with the FAB, the Public Health Advisory Board. And, you know, I encouraged them to submit it. So, you know, I, I really do feel like COVID-19 response has wreaked havoc on the public health workforce and the health, healthcare workforce in general. And so things that we can be doing to reinvest in that, in that workforce pipeline would be a really good thing in a community like this where we need a, we need a vibrant, a vibrant public health workforce. And, you know, the, the healthcare sector is such a massive part of our economy. And it is a massive part of why a lot of people see fit to move here and feel like this is a safe place for them to move. I mean, a lot of, you know, that the retiree population in this community would not be what it is without having a world-class hospital.
And on that note, just to complement COCC, I did get a text message from Ken Vesishart the other day. And the, the program he has for childcare, it's incredibly successful. The first one only had eight people that actually completed with seven new childcare businesses. I don't know, Greg, if he shared that with you. But this next class, the next, which is starting January 18th, they have 28 individuals registered for the class. This is childcare, 17 in English and 11 in Spanish. So it's an incredibly outstanding turnout. Words getting out what the, what the program, what the school is doing. And I'm just, you know, it was, it was like really great news considering, you know, when we lost, we were trying to gain 550 childcare spots in the county, remember? And then we immediately lost 49 in Sun River. So I'm thinking like, oh, my gosh, we are going the wrong way. But this is great news.
Is this, is, is this program tied to the ARPA investment?
Right. This was, we invested, I believe, $125,000 in this specific program. And the first one, you know, didn't, at least it did something.
Takes, takes time for programs.
But, you know, if we have seven new childcare spots opening, but now with the numbers for this next semester, it's, it's, it's excellent. So, thank you, Ken. Thanks for that good news. I told him that was my best news yesterday. So thanks for sharing that.
Just for reference of that, that would be on line number 37. That's where the board approved.
Okay, yes.
That component of funds of the overall childcare ask that came through a month or two.
Right. That might be the best $127,000 that we've spent, because it sounds like we're actually doing something with the desert.
Already delivering, that's great.
I know. It's actually already happening. So, yes.
Commissioners, is there action on the Local Public Health Workforce item on 69, item number 69?
And I'll make a comment about that. So Central Oregon Community College, you know, I think it was a nursing school from day one. I mean, that was exactly why it was put there, just the history of Central Oregon, one of the first community colleges around the country, or in the state of Oregon. So that's a great fit for just the history of why we even have a community college here is, is the healthcare workforce. I haven't done a lot of studying on this exact, you know, this, this line item, but it sounds like I'd be real supportive. So either we proceed today or we bring it back for somebody to explain the great work that can be done by this investment also.
Yes. Could someone explain perhaps, I don't know if they could explain it next week? I just would love.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with it, but I'm not, I'm not going to be the, I'm not going to be the best presenter of this proposal. But if, if there's support from the other commissioners, then I would, I would suggest that we bring this back sometime real soon and, and think about pulling that, that request out of the 3 million that we had set aside in these kind of, you know, public health contingency pots.
Excellent idea.
Okay, we'll work on that for the next update.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And then the big, the big picture, you know, this COIC Small Business Support, that's kind of a point in time that, that it's awkward to really pull something out and say, let's go down this path, because there may be other things that are getting funded by this COIC effort that we're doing right now. So as soon as that's funded and we see that spreadsheet, then I think we're going to be able to start picking things off very specifically, you know, right after that.
Great, thank you. Okay. Are we good today, then?
Unless there's any other questions on the worksheet or any other project proposals you'd like to discuss or have brought back?
So Greg, when do you think we'll hear from COCC? Do you think it's going to take like three weeks at least for them to finish up?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll know at that time?
It was a very complicated, it was more complex than what we, even after doing the same sort of process a few times before, it was, it's more complex. And the reason why it's more complex is we had to take available data, or they have to take the available data, the financial data that's available to them, including any previous assistance that came through under CARES or under PPP, and really try to determine the impact of the pandemic on both the revenue and expenses, including this, these other fundings, to come up with a number that represents the net financial impact of COVID. And that's, that's a real challenge to do. So that's why it's taking longer. And I think also because there might have been a little bit more response than we'd expected. So it's all good. So it's all good. I think we'll have a real comprehensive, we'll have covered as many bases as we possibly can, but it's just going to take a little bit longer to come back to you.
Greg, I'm just curious, do they request, do they take the tax return directly or do they get it from the IRS? You know, when you do mortgages and refinancing, the, your mortgage, the lender always asks you to fill out the forms so that they get it from the IRS so they can actually confirm that it's, it's really, those are your numbers that you filed?
Sure. They, so we've requested it from the applicant, and in several cases, many cases, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me because we're not done yet, but in many of the cases, we've had financial information that they've submitted under previous requests. So a lot of these aren't new, they're just somewhat continuing. So we have some other data to validate, but that is a very good point.
No, I just wondered, you know, it's, I know truly there are people in our community that need these funds, and I am personally disappointed that it's taken us so long. And, okay, so now we know all the rules, and hopefully we can get that money out to them the month of February.
Well, as soon as we know more, we'll, we'll check back within them and with them, CYC, and then we'll also provide an update at the next ARPA update on how we're doing with them.
Okay, in two weeks?
Two weeks, sure.
Okay.
Sorry, I still have one more question. So I've been, I've been thinking about this, the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter request for planning support, and, you know, as I was reviewing what we've allocated ARPA funds for, I really don't see a lot of difference between that request and the Oasis Village request, you know, getting a consultant, help you develop a plan for a facility. And so I, I want to go back and just ask, you know, what made the Oasis Village project eligible and what makes the Sisters project ineligible?
So feasibility studies are, or needs assessment, which is effectively what the request was, a needs assessment, are only eligible under infrastructure projects, which is broadband, water, and sewer under ARPA. The difference is that with the Oasis project, our understanding of it is that was a master plan, that was a actual moving forward with the project. The other, the Sisters request was a needs assessment, you know, what, what are actually the needs? There's some community outreach, you know, where do we actually, what do we actually need to proceed ahead with? Not the Oasis, which had a guideline or has a, they know they need it, they just need to plan it so they can move ahead with the construction. That was the difference between the two.
So if we asked the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter to reframe their proposal as a, as something kind of more similar in format to what the Oasis Village submitted to us, then we could, we could take another look at it?
Exactly.
Okay. Well, I.
It would effectively be a new request, so yeah, we definitely want to look at it.
Do, would there be support to, I'm looking at my fellow commissioners, would there be, would you be open to hearing a slightly reframed planning request?
I'd like to coordinate with city leadership, you know, city council, because that, that seems to be a little bit of a disconnect. We've got some passionate people wanting to provide some great services, their vision is to own a parcel possibly and operate, but we're, you know, we're getting mixed messages from the elected city council folks, and, and the town has grown right now. So as I say, I'm not against anything, but yeah, what can, what can we make clear as we proceed in partnership for the city? So that'd be working with city council.
Yeah, I, the tricky thing about that is I can, I can, I can respect the city council's concern about setting aside capital dollars for that cold weather shelter idea, but yeah, I'm still really puzzled by the, you know, kind of the, the concern or opposition around planning. I mean, you know, you want to put together good information, you want to talk to all the key people, and you want to have a thoughtful plan to move forward. And, you know, as far as I know, the city of Sisters does not provide cold weather shelter services. So we're talking about the, you know, the only entity, or the entity in that community who is actually providing services, providing the cold weather shelter service. And, I mean, if the, if the city said, you know, we will provide cold weather shelter services, you know, and here's an alternative proposal, you know, that, that we'd like you to find, I would be very interested in seeing that. But if they're not, if they're not going to provide the service themselves, then I really don't understand why they are, you know, opposed, how they could be opposed to the nonprofit in their community that provides this service, trying to do some planning to provide the service better. And, you know, so I'm open to hearing from the city, but on, on this segment, this slice of the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter Board of Directors' request, you know, I'm also willing to, you know, say we should fund it anyway, regardless of the council's concern.
I just want to remind everyone that I do believe we had 111 people in the count of homeless in Sisters that were in the forest, and that's 111 people, and I don't know if you noticed last night, but I think Sisters was even colder than Lepine. It was a first, definitely, it's, you know, we, and our snow has been quite significant on that side of the town. Hoodo has actually, several days been more of a snowfall than Mount Bachelor, which is pretty phenomenal. So you know it's coming down, and it has to be impacting those people. And I personally want to thank the churches in Sisters that have stepped up, really hoping that maybe another church will step up for this year to get us through the cold winter season. So I, I know that that's ending, and I had, I'd hoped that we could do, help them with, you know, going out to an assessment, I'm okay with that. I was okay with that a couple weeks ago, you know, I'm in Sisters a lot, and I, I know that there's a small group of people that are very passionate, and they, they do follow through. They follow through on a lot of really good for the community.
And the use of the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter this winter has mushroomed from last year, from, from prior years. I mean, they, they, you know, they got like six, eight, 10 people per night staying there. So it's, it's the kind of, the questioning that we heard last year about like, oh, how many people are actually using this service? It is, it has dramatically increased, so.
But then I worry about the person that has an animal in their car, and they're in the shelter, and then they go back out to their car with their animal. And, you know, I have a lot of animals, and I, you know, I worry that, you know, we, we don't want to lose anyone, and I know we lost someone in Sisters a couple years ago, and that gentleman was offered places to stay that night because it was going to be really cold, and he didn't take them, and I just, you know, I just don't want that to happen again.
And that's, that's something they could plan around during this planning process, you know?
Right.
The need, the specific needs of the, of the homeless population in the Sisters area. So, okay, well, I, I'll, I'll be in touch with those folks and ask them to kind of reframe their proposal.
I hope that'll be okay for them. I know, I think what we, we go through the church until the end of the month, and that's only a couple of weeks away. So as soon as they get it reframed, please come back and we'll put you on the agenda. You don't have to wait two weeks. Is that okay, Greg?
Neighbor, Neighbor Impact is out there, and they've coordinated with a local church in Southern Deschutes County in Lepine, and there's a warming shelter there, and they're providing services. So, I mean, there's, and I spoke to Charlene Reed about this yesterday, you know, make sure, communicate with Neighbor Impact and really get a feel for what's going on there. They are a community action agency, and, you know, they just have some, you know, experience and structure to be able to move this forward also.
Yeah, the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter is a partnership with Neighbor Impact. I mean, Neighbor Impact works, they, you know, they direct the funds to the local sites that allow the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter organization to run the, the cold weather shelter. So I mean, that, that's a, I mean, I think it'd be a great idea to pull Neighbor Impact into this discussion as well, but they're, they're working hand in glove with, with the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter Board already.
Okay, I think that's enough direction, is it not?
Yes. Any other questions, comments on the list for now?
No, thank you so much.
Okay. So the final item is, as we've talked about before, we've been operating under what's called the interim final rule. This was issued by Treasury in terms, and that gave us the direction that we've been operating under with all of our projects in terms of eligibility, reporting, and everything. There was an initial cutoff date for comments back on the interim final rule, it was the end of July, last July, and we had expected that they would have digested those comments and come back with a final rule within 60 days after that, so sometime in the September timeframe. It continued to get delayed and delayed and delayed to the point where they said that if you have issued, made approvals for grants underneath ARPA, underneath the interim final rule, the eligibility that you use to determine that interim final rule distribution would continue under the interim final rule. But we just received notice that the final rule will be issued in April, or it's issued now effective in April, and there's a, there's a few changes, but I just wanted Dan to give you a quick update on what some of those changes are. So, online.
Sure. Thanks, Greg. Yeah, as Greg said, the final rule was released last week, it'll be effective April 1st, 2022. So until that time, the interim rule is still what we'll be using for approvals. And really, the main point of this is the final rule didn't change much as it has to do with Deschutes County, the 33 point, or actually 34 million that we've approved so far through today will fall under the interim final rule. The remaining 3.6 or so million dollars that we have will fall under the final rule. And so really, there's not too much that's applicable to us at this point. The largest change in the final rule had to do with government provision of revenue loss, which was one of seven of the eligible categories for spending for your ARPA award. During the interim final rule, they made a fairly complex calculation and data pool to show if the entity ourselves, Deschutes County, had actually lost any revenue due to COVID-19. We were able to submit that, and it did not at that point show that we had lost any revenue due to COVID-19. However, there was a lot of complexity in that, and the Treasury got a lot of guidance and a lot of feedback that they needed to change the calculation process. So what they ended up doing is just saying, hey, there's a standard allowance of $10 million for governor, for that subset of ARPA, government provision of revenue loss. And the only reason that's really important is because that, that category is more broadly we use. For instance, we could build a hospital, a capital hospital, or we could do the jail expansion or the court expansion, even if it doesn't have to do with ARPA, if we had that revenue loss. But our previous calculations showed it did not, and that standard allowance of up to $10 million is not to exceed your actual ARPA award amount. So it's really important to note that this is not additional funds, but simply a subcategory of the eligible ARPA expenditures that does allow for more broad usage of the funds. So you'll probably hear a little bit of that on the meetings, it doesn't really apply to us at this point in time. Other changes in the final rule primarily revolve around more detailed definitions of requirements for ARPA services that were left fairly vague in the interim final rule. A lot of things were left vague, such as affordable housing definitions in the interim final rule. They've been narrowed down quite a bit, and in most cases, in the case of affordable housing, they're actually more conservative. We use an 80% area median income, and it looks like for the final rule, it's probably around 65% would be the max area median income. There's a little bit more on eligibility for small businesses and nonprofits and allowable capital expenditures. So I just want to pause there real quick and just ask, does anyone have any, that was a lot to take in, does anyone have any questions on, on either of those?
Dan, could you, could you repeat that, repeat that AMI threshold, for which kind, which categories of expenditure was that for?
For affordable, affordable housing, the Treasury has given general guidance in the federal, in the, in the final rule of anything less than 65% AMI, or 300%, I believe, of the federal poverty line. They have also though said, here are some documents that you can look for, for your local area, and if those are slightly different than that 65% AMI, you can use that. And so I've been researching that, and I don't believe that they're fundamentally different to, so we'll need to continue to look at that, but I don't, I don't think there's much of a difference. I think 65% AMI is going to be our cutoff. Some of our projects that we funded under the interim final rule were up to 80%, but that's not going to matter because that was under the interim final rule, and we had reached out to, I believe, NACO for their interpretation of that, and they had sent that, sent that back. So feel confident in all that. Any other questions?
So, you know, on that affordable housing, on those affordable housing investments, the fact that we, we did that allocation process early gave us a little bit more flexibility, which is great.
Certainly, yeah. The interim final rule was extremely vague, if not completely wide open almost, and so that helped us. We did eliminate workforce housing over 80% AMI based on some hot definitions, but yes, we did have more flexibility. So at this point, we do not believe that any of the changes in the final rule would make any of the previously ineligible projects eligible. And we also, besides those affordable housing projects, I don't think any of the ones that were eligible in the prior period would be ineligible now. But regardless, it's, it's not a matter because everything is approved under the interim final rule. So in summary, I don't see the final rule broadly changing our interpretations of ARPA. It has better defined eligible populations and services in each category of expenditures, and the interim final rule will still be active until April 1st of 2022.
Dan, just to clarify, anything that we, that the board approves up through the end of March would be underneath the eligibility requirements of the interim final rule?
So I do have a question, Dan. Remember, there was a workforce housing project for workforce, and they were asking us for some help? That still wouldn't, that would not be eligible, would it, for help?
It would be even less eligible.
Right, because it moved down to 65%. That's really too bad because that was a project that, it was workforce housing, and I guess we'll have to talk to the city again and see if there's any way they can help that project, maybe get to come together on some of the things for it.
A little bit of semantics, because 80% AMI is still workforce housing. I mean, there's a lot of workforce in there, that, that proposal was a missing middle, 80 to 120%, which would have, you know, I would call that middle-class housing. But, yeah, I, I wish we could have invested in that project as well.
But the good news is we did all those Habitat projects, which I'm really hoping that will be impactful for the community sooner rather than later. So thank you to all the Habitat projects that came to us and the core project, housing and ownership, I really think that's important.
And Housing Works and Hayden Homes as well?
Right, Hayden Homes. Yeah, thank you for Hayden Homes and all they've done.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Look for an update in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, we're, our COID hearing preparation, please?
I'm interested in taking just a break real quick, just a moment break if possible, or I'm going to step away and I'll be right back.
Okay. Yeah, if you, go ahead. Is it snowing?
I'll be back in just a moment, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll run to the restroom.
Recording.
Yeah, are in particular kinds of settings. For example, immediately adjacent to the urban growth boundary of the city of Bend, that it, you know, it might, A, it might make sense to reclassify those, and B, that there are, that there are pathways. I guess when I was first asking about non-prime resource lands, that was basically what I was trying to understand is, is a, is, you know, what are the pathways for reclassifying land? How hard is it? I mean, you know, CYD is an entity that, you know, has some resources, and this is a substantial-sized piece of land, and it, you know, it's a worth, it's probably going to be worthwhile for them to, to go through this process. But, you know, for smaller landowners, you know, it can, it's also helpful to try to understand, you know, how big of a burden that is. And, and that's, you know, when, when we were talking, you know, back during the discussions of the non-prime resource land policy, that was, one of the things I was trying to get at is, you know, what can we do to support and help those, those small landowners, those two-acre landowners who are otherwise, you know, since the, the state wouldn't, wouldn't do a blanket policy for us, those small landowners that are otherwise left to, you know, to, to try to make their one-off happen.
Yeah, and if I may, just two quick follow-up comments. One is, it's important to emphasize that our comprehensive plan today acknowledges and supports these kinds of redesignations. And, and then secondly, I would offer that as, as the county commission fields inquiries about these opportunities, to please send them to the planning division. You know, we're familiar with, we have six, six examples that have been acknowledged statewide. This is potentially a seventh. There are some lessons that can be learned. There are some frameworks that can be explored. One doesn't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel, but as Tarek noted, there's, there's some obligations for hiring a soil scientist, and you have to do a traffic engineering analysis. Many retain land use professionals to get them through the process. But the, the return, you know, if one can redesignate the property outside of the exclusive farm use zone, which has very explicit use categories that are determined by the state, you know, and that, you know, if it can be converted to a rural residential zone, it opens up more opportunities. And as you noted, Commissioner, this is one of actually three that are, three redesignations, two that have been successful, that have positioned themselves near the Bend urban growth boundary, and, and admittedly are positioning or have positioned, have successfully been able to bring that land into the urban growth boundary to help meet the city of Bend's housing and employment needs.
Tarek, could you let me know, how many property owners was the original notice mailed to, I believe within 750 feet of the property?
Right, I, I wouldn't know the exact number offhand. There's a list in the noticing there, but-
Okay.
Of them who were noticed, there were 13 folks that put in written, or excuse me, 12 that were written comments, and they were all fairly robust. They, sometimes it was an individual representing some other of their friends, even though that really only counts for themselves. But, yeah, we heard from mostly folks that were within the city of Bend's neighborhood just to the west of this subject property. That was predominantly the, the commenters that came in.
Okay.
But, but nothing that rose to the level of an appeal? And-
Well, so again, this didn't necessarily require an appeal, and so I think potentially at the, the public hearing in two weeks, there might be more folks that were, so to speak, kind of saving up their, their testimony for, for that kind of a forum. But just at the hearings officer hearing, we, even then, we had three folks show up. So I, yeah, I anticipate there would be some public involvement still, even at the public hearing phase.
Okay, so that's good to know, that because reading their comments, you know, people are concerned, and yet, you know, the city needs to go somewhere. So I would, I would truly expect that they would want to come and comment in front of our meeting, what is it, two weeks?
On the 26th.
Okay.
And, yeah, so anyone that submitted written or was there in, in person for testimony, received direct notice of the public hearing, and then again, it went out to the 750 for that radius, so-
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see who shows up, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you know, quite a few people did take time at that point, you know, to let us, to let you know what they were considering with this, this significant change. Are there any other questions? Mr. DeBonne? No? Okay, Commissioner Chang? Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Tarek.
Thank you for your time, Commissioners. Have a great afternoon.
Are you gonna take this with you, then?
I will take that one. I'll bring it back for the public hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
Okay, so now we have the transit room.
Hey, man, you got it.
Go ahead, Greg.
Ready? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners, again. Greg Munn from County Finance Office. And the agenda item today is to review a couple of proposals for the use of transient room tax revenue. In terms of background, staff presented the history and background to the TRT program going back to its inception in 1975. That was back in November. And as you know, over the last couple of years, as a result of the pandemic, we've seen a dramatic increase in the amount of room tax collections since then. And with that, there has been, and probably will continue to be requests for the use of that, those funds. And so preliminary to our budget process, which really starts in the next month or so, we have a couple of proposals before you today to, for consideration of use of those funds. One, the first one on the list is a trails and trail-related infrastructure project, and Jana Johnson, I don't-
They're outside.
Outside the door.
Outside the door?
Yes.
Thank you. Jana Johnson will step in here momentarily to discuss her project proposal. And then we have our friends from Sun River area, Bill Heffburn, he's the Chair of the Sun River Service District, will discuss the public safety building proposal, which happens to be up on your screen at this point. So I'm gonna move out of the way here.
Good morning.
Morning.
So for visual presentation, we have a- I have a stick.
Yeah.
Yep. Wrong one. Tarek, I need an access to my notes that are, the presenter notes, would it be possible? I could either set up my own computer to do that, or- Sorry for the delay here, just need to get my technology set up. And then to advance the slides, just arrow? Okay. All right.
Good morning, Jana. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us. So thanks for, for granting us this time and opportunity to present our proposal to invest annually a portion of unallocated TRT funds into our trails. I'm Jana Johnson, I'm the coordinator for the Deschutes- Can you hear me okay? Okay. I'm the coordinator for the Deschutes Trails Coalition, and with me here is Rika Ayat, who is the Chair of the DTC, and John Allen, who's also a member of our leadership committee. The Deschutes Trails Coalition, we're a coalition of over 30 organizations, businesses, and agencies working collaboratively to foster an exceptional regional trail system that is sustainably managed and balances the need of people and nature. We are made up of over 30 trails organizations, land management agencies, visitor bureaus, conservation organizations, businesses, organizations representing youth and underserved populations. Our mission is to collaboratively foster an exceptional regional trail system that is sustainably managed. We formed in 2018. In that time, we have raised over $150,000 through our Dollar for Trails program that, through which we award funds through our Small Grants Program to fund on-the-ground projects. We are also leading the creation of a complex database that provides resource data, use patterns, and other natural resource data to help inform our efforts towards a sustainable trail system. And primarily, we resolve user group conflicts by convening all these various trail stakeholders to achieve, achieve shared trails goals. The DTC's vision is a deliberately designed and sustainably maintained regional trail system that is stewarded by the community and land managers, and upholds our four pillars of sustainability, the economic, physical, social, and environmental. So that gives you kind of a foundation of, of who the DTC is and what our, our values and missions are. So why are we here today? Ultimately, we're here to ask the county to reinvest annually a million dollars of unrestricted funds into trails and trail-related infrastructure across Deschutes County. A few key points I'd like to make before moving forward, some assumptions that we can make. Trails are a primary reason people come to central Oregon, to live, to recreate, and to vacation. Our trails are being impacted by several factors, such as increased use, as well as climate change. And we know that the existing trail funding, opportunities that are not keeping pace with maintenance and infrastructure needs. I would also like to state, state that we in Deschutes County have an opportunity to rectify that, to sustain trails that are not only a big part of central Oregon's identity, but its economy. There's a missing piece of the trail funding puzzle, and the county TRT could go a long way in filling that gap. And DTC is willing to help in this effort in any way possible. So we are all aware of the population growth that has happened in Deschutes County, and that is forecasted to continue. And with this growth, as applies to our trails, it translates to more use. And while it's a great thing to have so many people enjoying the trails and public lands, increased use often means increased impacts to our trails. So the data that you're seeing on this screen, this has come from a recent report titled, "The Economic and Social Importance of Deschutes National Forest Trails." It's done by a group called Eco Northwest, which is a consulting firm based in the Pacific Northwest that specializes in economics, finance, and planning. So this data is reflective of just the Deschutes National Forest, but we can kind of assume some of these trends are paralleled in other, on other public lands as well in Deschutes County. And I'm happy to share that report with you at, at some point. It's just about to be finalized, so you don't need to worry about losing track of this data, I can get that to you at a later time.
And, and Jana, this, this table we're looking at, those numbers are in thousands.
Yes.
So if you're, if you're saying there's-
Twenty-five horse, pack trips, yeah.
Yeah, 25,000 horseback trips.
Yes. So the total number of trips in '21 was 2,450,000. And with an annual expected growth, by 2040, it's predicted to be 3 million trips per year. And again, that's just on the national forest, it's not including BLM, or state parks, or Bend Parks and Rec. And then that table just kind of shows you the, the breakdown. Hiking is, hiking and pedestrian is, is the largest, followed by, I believe, bicycling and snow-based recreation. So are trails a luxury or livelihood? We recognize that the Board of Commissioners is facing other compelling and competing needs that these TRT funds could support. On the surface, having recreational opportunities may seem like a luxury comparatively. And while it is a luxury to live in a place, with these trail opportunities, their importance reaches well beyond an individual enjoying a day on the trails. This is also about livelihood, economic growth, and stability in Deschutes County. So next, we will take a look at how trails support our local economy. So again, this is from the Deschutes National Forest alone. From that Eco Northwest report that I referenced, in 2021, 100, somewhere between 136 million and 224 million were spent locally by trail users. And that range, it's based on the share of visitor expenses attributed to trail activities. 1,400 jobs were created, and 57 million in labor income that recirculates through the local community, economy. This slide, this slide shows us what it costs to sustain the trail network that has supported our local economy, as shown in the previous slide. $1.8 million is the annual Deschutes National Forest Trails budget. And this falls short of the annual funding needed to main trails and trail facilities in their current condition, regardless of whether their condition is good or poor, it's just the amount needed to maintain the status quo. Additionally, there's an estimated backlog of deferred maintenance for trails and trail facilities totaling $10.2 million. These costs have accrued over decades of limited funding that couldn't keep pace with maintenance and management needs. So a little trail humor for you. This leaves us with an immediate funding gap of $9.16 million of maintenance and repairs, which resulted in some of the poor conditions we'll find out on, on our trails. Just a few examples, we see erosion and sedimentation, impact to the riparian areas. We're seeing campsite proliferation, people camping in places that we've never seen them before over the, the last few years. Less native vegetation and soil stability, more ground disturbance, more instances of human waste and other garbage to manage and remove. People behaving in ways that compromise sustainability, such as incursions into the Bend watershed, which is closed to motorized use for our water quality. People parking next, right next to a low, no parking sign, creating impacts that weren't there before, that take a really long time to regenerate. And then just poorer recreation habits, that's the cabin butte area. Also, our infrastructure is aging. There are dozens of bridges across the national forest alone that are aging out and need to be replaced, which are very logistically challenging and costly, as well as other aging infrastructure, such as numerous remote winter shelters, horse corrals, and kiosks. Roads accessing trail infrastructure, or used as a means for recreating, are seeing more needs for road reconstruction and efforts that far exceed regular grading. Side-by-side use has become a popular recreation activity on dirt roads throughout central Oregon, and lots of people are hauling trailers for horses, ATVs, et cetera, in addition to passenger cars getting to a trailhead. And then there's the basic maintenance that needs to be performed annually to keep trails passable. The bottom left is, see, an oath is growing in and completely obliterating where the, the trail corridor is. So there's a lot that goes into maintaining our trails, and we are so fortunate that our community cares. We have so many great volunteers in central Oregon, who volunteered over 42,000 hours in a year on the national forest alone. Volunteers do so much, but they can't do it all. More complex and remote projects, and those requiring special equipment, aren't a good fit for volunteers. Even with a volunteer community as robust as the one we have here, we are still not keeping pace without more funding.
Do you have a value of the 42,000 hours? I mean, does that, does that at all, could that reduce the funding gap, then?
It definitely helps toward, contributing towards that value. It doesn't close that gap. And in part, it's because of what I just mentioned, that there are certain things that the, the volunteers just can't do, you know, like getting a volunteer helicopter to deliver materials, we don't have access to that, or construction projects that are just more technical or require equipment and skill that, you may find that, that rare volunteer out there. But they're a great help in the basic maintenance realm, but not so much in that larger deferred rate maintenance realm, the 10.2 million that is-
Yeah, volunteer with a shovel is not gonna fix a rutted road, for example.
Yeah.
Hey, Jana, that value is about 1.1 million in labor.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, it's definitely, they're doing, you know, important things.
Oh, absolutely.
You know.
Yeah, and, and like I said, we are, we are more fortunate than most communities to have the people that we do. We've got a really great, great community with, well, all the logos that you saw on that first slide is testament to how many people are involved, doing good things, so.
I mean, I would, I would argue, I would argue that the volunteers are carrying the majority of the load in, in, in many cases, because federal investment in recreation infrastructure is so inadequate, that, you know, the, the community has stepped up to a tremendous degree, but it's not, it's not enough.
Yeah, they're especially helpful in that basic maintenance realm, the clearing blowdowns, cleaning drainage, and cutting brush back to maintain a corridor, but the more significant drainage work, and things that are causing the more costly damage, and the damage that's harder to fix, is, is something that's a little bit out of reach of, of most of our volunteer groups.
Yeah, I mean, conceivably, if, if only locals were using the trails, then the local volunteer power that's put into them might be closer to enough, but local, you know, if, if basically you're dependent on, on local volunteers to, to maintain a regional trail system, and you have millions and millions of visitors who are paying transient room taxes, using those trails every, every year, it's, it's, you know, you, you can't expect local volunteers to, to rise to the demand of all of that impact of recreational use.
Yeah, and, and in a sense, you know, with these, with those that are visiting this area to use the trails, their tax, if some of their tax dollars are going back into that reinvestment, that seems like a really nice built-in way for them to give back to the system that they're enjoying, as well as the local population is. So, yeah, so funding is, is definitely a key piece of this. I kind of think of it as a patchwork quilt, that different funding sources fund different things, and they have varying criteria for these different grant opportunities and other funding sources. It's unusual for one funding source to fund a project from start to finish, through the planning, analysis, design, and implementation. But together, these funds, sources may collectively fund all the different phases, and could leverage each other to bring projects to completion. Many grants, grants will only fund shovel-ready projects, which results in a backlog of very worthy projects, but that get caught in a, in a bottleneck where they need analysis before they can, can be moved to that shovel-ready phase, to make them qualified for these other grant funds. So this and other factors, that leaves a hole in this pa, patchwork of funding. So what can the county do to help? We know that our trails are in need, we know that conditions are deteriorating, that there's substantial maintenance backlog, and that we don't currently have the financial resources to overcome this. And we know that there's a solution, that the county has unallocated TRT dollars that could help to close this gap. Because these funds are unrestricted, they could be used to fund things that other funding sources just aren't able to. As mentioned a few slides back, most grants require proposals for shovel-ready projects. But how do projects that require planning, analysis, and design to become shovel-ready get to that point without additional funding? This is one of the biggest bottlenecks that prevent more projects being eligible, AKA shovel-ready, for a host of grant funds. So one way TRT funds could be awarded is through a grant program. There are several decisions to be made in establishing a grant program, and DTC is willing to take the lead on this and to help in any way possible.
I think originally, you said you'd raised like 150,000 since your inception in 2018, is that correct?
Yes.
With fundraising, or-
It's through our Dollar for Trails program, so it's an opt-out program in play in some of our lodging establishments, where a dollar gets added on. And each year, we have a grant process that DTC has administered, somewhere between 30, 60,000 dollars a year, that go to sign projects, or, you know, funding a trail training seminar, things like that. So through this program, through a grant-funded program, TRT funds could fund projects. There are many, many examples of those, but generally, they fall into these few categories. And you might have seen this in the proposal as well. Generally, it falls into trail maintenance and construction, environmental analysis, NEPA, road maintenance and construction, reports, studies, strategic trails planning, major projects such as paved path maintenance or construction, or replacing trail bridges and other infrastructure needs. Thought it'd be good to have a, a segment for minor projects, in the 2 to 10,000 dollar range, maybe up to a certain threshold, like 40,000 dollars a year, and then covering the administration costs of the grant. Bottom lines, there's no shortage of great projects that could be revived by the county with these funds.
Jana, a couple of questions. Would trailheads fall under road maintenance reconstruction? So, you know, a trailhead is basically a parking lot, at, at the, at the end of a trail. You know, for example, Commissioner DeBonne recently was discussing with us a project in La Pine, where, yeah, I think it was, I think it was an OHV trail system, that they needed a trailhead for, and so I'm, I'm wondering whether trailheads would be considered as part of this package as well, trailhead investments?
Yes.
So that, that's, that was one thing I wanted to ask about. The, the other, the other thing I wanted to ask you about was, I saw on the list of members, partners within the Deschutes Trails Coalition, the Paddle Trail Alliance, and there are, you know, I'm a person who, who, who likes to be on land, a lot of the time recreating, but I also like to get on the water. And, and so I'm wondering about things like boat launches, or, you know, kind of making, you know, beaches where people want to access the river or lakes, more, you know, making those more durable and, and more sustainable for recreational use, might be, might be an eligible category within, you know, within the, the categories of expenditure that we're talking about.
Yes, I think that, you know, trail and trail-related infrastructure, a paddle trail is, it's another type of, of, of trail, and that is infrastructure that supports that, so yes.
Yes, I just want to make sure that we're-
Yeah.
In terms of eligibility, we're thinking as broadly as we should be? Thanks.
So the next steps, there's obviously some decisions that the county needs to make, and several steps needed to create a program, if that were the direction we choose to go. And DTC is here to help craft a program that fits the county's needs. It's worth noting that these TRT funds are generated by tourists, and by reinvesting them in our trails, that benefits not only our visitors, but also the residents of Deschutes County. The trails need the county's help, and we hope that you will support us. Thanks very much for your time, and we are available for any questions or further discussion.
So I have a question. So this is Commissioner DeBonne. The Trails Coalition is a group of all the organizations, and I'm just wondering, what's the relationship back to the Forest Service itself? So we're talking about the Deschutes National Forest, an entity owned by the people, run by the Forest Service, and they're gonna give approvals for any project. So, you know, this list that you're showing us and these ideas, is that the list the Forest Service is working with, or is there, are, are these applic-, is each one- Service is working with, or is there, are these applic-, is each one an application to the Forest Service? And is, is the Forest Service at the table, I guess? And I know John's in the room too, so he can help with this. You know, my, my thought is, maybe we should just give the Forest Service X amount of dollars, and then they can go do this grant program too.
They have, we have a support letter from Holly Jukes in our pocket.
Yes, we, we definitely have a, a strong relationship with the Forest Service. BLM is also part of our coalition as well, as we've been in touch with Bend Parks and Rec and have connections with Oregon State Parks. So we are definitely very much in contact with these, these agencies, and it's critical to have that relationship and that conduit, knowing that all these, you know, much of, much of the projects that are happening on public land are through these agencies. We need their, their support, and we have regular dialogue and communication. So we're, we're well-versed in, in the need. They've been very responsive in terms of coming up with project lists. I think it, you know, coming out of this grant opportunity, the, that relationship will be very important to continue to, to lean on that and to figure out, you know, kind of in that patchwork quilt idea again, which pieces can be moved forward? Can we contract NEPA for, on behalf of the Forest Service with, with these funds to then get projects to a shovel, shovel-ready place? And I know that's something that they're currently, we've talked about that, they're currently doing some form of that from time to time, sometimes hybrid NEPA of contracting some of it out and doing some of it in-house. So it's, there's a, a good relationship, good dialogue, and I trust that we would continue to work with them very well to move these various projects forward.
Well, and I'm, I'm just thinking through the approval process, you know, so if, if Forest Service land managers are trying to just guide, you know, more courses and SATVs or whatever, I'm not trying to push your button there, I'm just saying, you know, if there's a policy decision to be made, and, but the Trail Coalition has critical mass and money on some project, is it, you know, what does that relationship look like? Or, you know, does, does the Forest Service always have veto opportunity, or not even starting a project opportunity? I just worry that, you know, some interests might go way down a path, like, man, this is the greatest thing since sliced bread, and then the Forest Service is like, well, this doesn't fit into what we wanted to see out here. You know, that, that relationship.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the Forest Service has relied on the DTC to convene those conversations with this diversity of trail user groups, so that we can kind of speak as a unified voice, like, this is what the, the trails community wants. And we've vetted that, we've talked with the equestrians, the ATV users, the snowmobile users, the hikers, the bikers. And through that dialogue, we come up, we come to a place where we feel like we have a really solid understanding of what our unified trails voice is. And, and we have very regular meetings with the foresters, they meet with them monthly, they're also coming to our monthly meetings. So they're very much aware of, of what's happening, and there's a respectful relationship there. There's an understanding we all need to collaborate together if we're going to be successful in this.
If I could say a couple of things about this, you know, first off, I would not expect all of the funds that, that, that the county allocated, all of the TRT funds that the county allocated, you know, to this program, to go into Forest Service projects. They might go to, they might be, you know, spent on projects on the BLM, they might be spent on, you know, park and rec district projects, you know, private landowners, canal conversions, the, you know, the, you know, as, as, as a number of our irrigation districts bury pipes, you know, bury, you know, put pipes in canal right of ways. There's some really exciting opportunities to create trails in those locations as well. So that would be one reason not to kind of restrict ourselves by trying to make this a Forest Service-specific program. The, the other thing that I think is really important to, to think about is that when I, when I said that, that community volunteer organizations are really carrying the weight on, on making a lot of this stuff happen, I, I was, I, I, I really mean that. You look at a, you know, a great example, the Central Oregon Trail Alliance, COTA, the mountain bike folks, you know, their South Deschutes County chapter, they are the ones who are going out on the landscape, envisioning trail routes, then talking to the Forest Service, then marshaling the, the human and financial resources that are needed to, to build that trail, then maintaining it, and also spending some time riding on the trail too. But I mean, the, so the, the roles of those volunteer trail groups that Diana showed on her, her first slide, I mean, is, are huge. And, and, you know, in, in some ways, the Forest Service is kind of like the, the wallflower that's waiting for someone to ask them, you know, come and ask them to dance. It's kind of, I would, I would describe the, more the dynamic that we see in our community than that the Forest Service really leading and, and driving the process as much. And, and that's just in part because of the, the insufficient resources that they have. So by setting up a program outside the Forest Service, we're empowering those, those community organizations that are, you know, again, putting in, what was the number of, of hours of volunteer time?
92,000.
You know, tens of thousands of hours of, of volunteer time on, on a whole range of activities to make, make the trails that we have possible here in the, in Deschutes County.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I, I would also add, just in response to that piece about, you know, giving the Forest Service money, that the Forest Service has really limited capacity, and, and that's one thing we're hearing over and over, is that they really need our help in, in carrying some of that, that workload to implement these projects, because they don't have, they only have so much capacity to take on administration of a, a grant program, or, you know, something to that magnitude. And I think we're, we're well-positioned to do that, and I think they would prefer, from the conversations I've had, the sense I have is that they would prefer that we fill in that role and add capacity in that way.
So one of the observations, looking at the spreadsheet a little bit, talks about basic maintenance and construction at a couple hundred dollars a, a mile, or thousands of dollars per mile for, for new trails or road maintenance. So my point is, there's, so there's probably jobs in there. I'm just wondering, you know, not everything is a volunteer club project, especially when you're doing, you know, new trails possibly, or road maintenance. Can you talk about that a little bit? Jobs I'm referring to, construction subcontractors?
Yes, so these, these, like, major road reconstruction and, and maintenance, for example, that's something that the Forest Service doesn't have the capacity to do in the conversations I've had with their roads manager. And so that is something that would be contracted out. So that money would be, you know, into the private sector, hiring a, a company to come and do that, that work. Same goes for trail maintenance. Contract bridge construction is also a very, is something that's very straightforward to contract out. So I think most of these would be through, through contract, again, because the, the professional crews that are working for the land management agencies typically don't have capacity to take on some of these bigger things.
But, but yeah, to kind of pursue that idea further, investing dollars is creating jobs. It's basically helping to, to create and expand, you know, a, a recreation infrastructure workforce here in, in Central Oregon, which, you know, given the amount of recreation that we have, it would be good to have.
And, and one idea that's been bandied about a bit with others in the Forest Service, as well as Travel Oregon, is setting up a, a regional Central Oregon Trail crew that could be sort of a shared resource amongst these different agencies and clubs that we, partners that we work with. And, and that would be a way, again, the same concept, it's not specifically a contract, it's a longer-term thing, that could be a part of this, this puzzle as well.
So then, one question about the administration dollars, talks about 240,000. Is that the, so that's the Deschutes Trails Coalition administration, is that your position? Is that?
Yes.
Current job, or is it? Job?
Sorry to interrupt. Yeah, the, the Deschutes Trails Coalition were the administrators of, of that program. We would need to hire somebody on a part-time basis to administer that grant. And I would say, John and Rika, please chime in if there's anything additional that you want to add to the discussion.
One, one thought I'd like to share with my fellow commissioners as we, as we think about allocating some of our unallocated TRT funds to this, or other ways to pay for it, is, yeah, I'm, I'm in support of, of allocating a portion of county unallocated TRT to this, to this program. And I, I would like to see us also ask Visit Central Oregon to make a, a matching contribution. And we hear, we hear a lot in our community about, we hear a lot of frustration in our community about how much money is spent by, you know, Visit Bend or Visit Central Oregon on tourism promotion. And the, the dollars that they receive, the TRT dollars that, that those entities receive are much more restricted than our dollars. But one of the things that they are allowed to spend their dollars on is tourism-related facilities. And I would, I would certainly argue that, you know, trails, boat launches, trailheads, ro-, access roads are tourism-related facilities that are heavily, heavily used by tourists. So if we, you know, we could, if, if we could come up with like a, a two-to-one or four-to-one type, type ratio, and, and, you know, I, I would suggest that the, the county cover the bulk out of our, out of our, our, our unallocated TRT, but that we, we challenge Visit Central Oregon to match, match those dollars. And then, you know, to, to, you know, that also helps to address some of the, the concerns and complaints in our community about spending too much on, on tourism promotion, because if you, if you take 100 or 250,000 a year and you spend it on tourism-related facilities instead, then it keeps more of a cap on, on tourism promotion expenditures.
So you're referring to Central Oregon Visitors Association, our contracted destination marketing organization, or the city of Bend?
I, I would say Visit Central Oregon, because...
Which is Central Oregon Visitors Association.
Because, because Visit Bend has already created a program like this.
Yeah, just making sure I understood what you're saying there. So that's, I mean, that's under us, that's the county's, county's agreement, it's documented in place, that proportion. So there's a conversation there, but I think we could drive it also. It's not asking, it's, we're, we're in the driver's seat of something like that.
Okay, well, yeah, I, I having, I'm not the board, I'm not the commissioner that serves on the board of Visit Central Oregon, so I don't, you know, I don't have a good sense of, of the, the relationship dynamics there, but...
Well, so cutting to it, I mean, I'm supportive, let's do something. You know, is this amount the correct amount that's being asked for? And then also, what are we going to do year after year? Is it going to be part of an annual budget process? Because, you know, we're definitely seeing big numbers in this, uh, domain right now, overnight lodging, transient room tax creation, past expectations. But it may not always be like that, you know, it may change around at some time, so then there's a downhill side to it. So, yeah, figuring out a, a, a supportable amount, and then also kind of putting direction to, or at least vision to what we might do in future years.
So I do serve on that board, and Greg, that was mentioned in our conversation about, yes, it always, it seems like we spend so much money inviting people to come here, and then they don't even follow the rules, right? So we have to then have videos, how to properly, you know, walk through the trail so you don't destroy it. It's, it's always, you know, it's a catch. But when, Diana, you were saying that only the federal government spends 1 million in, in maintenance a year here in Deschutes County? Is that, that 1.08?
1.08 is the Deschutes National Forest's...
Their budget?
Budget for, yes, for, for trail and trail-related facilities.
Okay, and that, so that we have this 9 million that's accumulating every year that's not getting done?
Yes, exactly.
Deferred maintenance backlog gets bigger and bigger.
Right, I, I get that. So what is it that we can comfortably, you know, can we split it with the Central Oregon Visitors Association? Greg, is that something that we should be talking to them about at a different, another point in time?
Yes, you beat me to it, at another point in time.
Right.
The formula, I, I, I'll, I'll throw out a, I'll throw out a, a suggested formula as a starting point for discussions. I think it would be great if we, if we allocated 400,000 of, of our unallocated TRT on an annual basis to this, and challenged Visit Central Oregon to, to commit another 1 to 200,000. And you guys can, can...
Did you want to make a comment?
We just need you on the record.
Yes, please.
Apologies, I'm Rika Ayat, the chair of the Trails Coalition, and just wanted to acknowledge that both Visit Bend and Visit Central Oregon have been supporters of the Trails Coalition since its inception, and actually have partnered with us annually to help fund our coordinator position for the past five years. And so we have that relationship, and have, they've been really supportive of our work. And so I would encourage this conversation to continue and how we can continue to partner.
So what, how much have they contributed, though?
Well, it's not 200,000, it's about 15K a year each
Okay.
Towards our coordinator position. And I believe for Visit Central Oregon, that comes out of the RCTP program funds that they're getting from Travel Oregon, and then those come through Visit Central Oregon to the Trails Coalition.
Okay, so we're definitely asking for more than that?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So for a starting point for, for our negotiations with, with Visit Central Oregon, how does that sound? We, we put in 400,000, they put in 1 to 200,000?
So I'd rather just focus on this, this amount right now and just, you know, have a discussion in the future about other funds. There's no, just, I don't know, I don't want to support kind of a challenger at this point. I mean, that's, that's a discussion for us to have with our business partner, it's us, you know, it's not us and them, it's us. I would, I, one of my visions for these projects is, you know, kind of the specifics, you know, what, what trail reconstruction, what, what crews, which parking lot, you know, as in, I, I, I like this idea, let's go do it. So I don't mind coming up with an amount of money, and I'd just like to see, you know, the list of projects as they're happening, just, you know, a quarterly update, or at least annual update, where this is, this is what we think we're going to do this year, and this is what we did last year. So, and I don't mind getting to the 600,000 level, out of our current funds, unallocated transient room tax, and just, yeah, making this really be a positive community of effort.
Well, I like the 600,000, I just think that we should look at future funding after we've met with COVA and figure it out what, where they're, where we can be comfortable to go forward with them, because definitely contributing more than 15,000 a year, I think, is really important. It's definite, it's, it's, you know, you can see the damage and the use and every, you know, if you're accumulating 9 million a year, that's rather significant after a period in time. So you're making, can you make the motion then?
Yeah, 600,000 unallocated transient room tax for, for the Central Oregon Trails Coalition and all of its partners to do great work out there.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Now, is, are you doing it for every year, or are you saying for this year?
Oh, for this year, but this will also, this will put a, you know, kind of a scope on what we've done in the past and what we might do in the future, you know? So this is, this is, yeah, not a contract in the future, but an annual, annual discussion. And it, and it could be folded into the budget, too.
Right, it could be in a couple of months, so, all right.
And, and if we allocate 600,000 right now, and, and the Deschutes Trails Coalition has an opportunity to run a, run a cycle this year, then, you know, we'll, I, I would assume that by, you know, November or December, we'll be able to get a report back on where the, where the dollars went, and, or what projects the dollars are going into, and, you know, get a sense of what kind of an impact this program can have.
Actually, since the need to me sounds so enormous, I would like to hear in like three months what you're doing. It's just like the feedback we got from COCC about the childcare that we funded, we only funded 125,000, but it seems like it was an excellent investment. So, yes, I would think you, there would be a lot you could do sooner, you know, we're almost, we'll be to spring, what, in March or April or something?
About, how about three months after whatever agreement gets signed?
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And we're, we're happy to, um, to, to craft this in any way that's most helpful to the, to the county and meets, meets your needs. So we'll continue to work together on that.
Okay. May I take the vote now?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you, Jenna.
And I'm thinking just a couple, a couple before and after photos is going to be wonderful, you know, to see that project, any projects.
Me out there with my horse, right?
There you go.
One of my fabulous horses that I never get to ride.
Thank you so very much for your support today. Greatly, greatly appreciate it. And I look forward to future conversations and demonstrating all the great work that we're able to do because of these funds. So thank you very much again.
Thank you, Jenna, for joining us. And thank you, John.
Just one closing comment I would make about this topic. I mean, we, we all saw how, how paltry the 1 million dollars a year that the Deschutes National Forest is spending on recreation infrastructure is. And, um, you know, that is a congressional appropriations decision. And, you know, I'd just like to, you know, uh, put the idea with my, with my fellow commissioners that, um, through an organization like the Association of Oregon Counties, um, many commissioners who, uh, live in, or, or, you know, are, are responsible for, um, public lands, communities where recreation is a major economic driver, could be pushing for increased appropriations so that the 1 million dollars on that side of the ledger would actually be bigger, um, for a, a national forest with the kind of recreational use that, uh, the Deschutes has. So that, that's, yeah, we spent a lot of time, uh, at AOC doing advocacy about federal lands issues, uh, in other ways. And, this is something that I would love to see, um, us addressing at, at, uh, at a state level with our fellow commissioners.
And then also one other note, uh, if there's like, uh, a one-time bigger project, I, I wouldn't mind hearing about that. And I just want the group to understand, you know, cause if there's one of those just, uh, mud pit roads, failed bridge, connection to something that's on the other side of something, that's just a bigger capital need, uh, you know, bring it around, bring it around in the future. Cause that one, it's always easier to spend money one time and not reoccurring commitments into the future.
Chair, I just, I want to echo the importance of what Commissioner DeBohn just stated. As we have this request for multi, multi-years, we have a next request is going to be for multi-years. We could have additional requests for multi-years for TRT funds. We just have to be aware that if we have a catastrophic wildfire event that shuts events down like we had a couple of years ago in Sisters, we could very well experience a deficit. Um, or we, I shouldn't say deficit, but the collections could be minimal. And so if we're on the hook or committed, we're then utilizing the precious general fund dollars that we have. So, um, I just ask us to, to be cautious as we think about the big multi-year commitments.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was looking in the 4 to 600,000 range rather than at a, a full million. Uh, just cause, you know, my, my impression right now is that our, our unallocated, uh, you know, our, our unallocated above current requirements that we're placing on, um, on TRT, you know, there could be years when it's only 2 million bucks. Um, you know, this year it's going to be four, uh, maybe, but, uh, there could be years where it's only, you know, 2 million dollars and, and, um, you know, I wouldn't want to, uh, I wouldn't want to promise half of that. Uh, you know, right at this moment.
And I want to thank you, Nick, for making that statement. Conservative accounting is always our goal. And, um, I think that's important to remember that if there is a fire or if we have smoke for July and August, remember how awful that was a couple of years ago? We, you know, it, it can be really, um, you know, decimating to our tourist season. So let's hope, even though it seems like it's going all year round now. Great. Well, thank you, Nick. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, I want to introduce, uh, Bill Hepburn. He's the chair of the Sun River Service District. And he's going to talk to you about a new public safety building project in Sun River.
Well, good morning. Nice to-
Good morning.
Nice to see all of you again. And I certainly appreciate this opportunity to, to, uh, to talk to the Board of Commissioners about the Sun River Public Safety Project. I am joined today by, uh, John Ralston, the vice chair of the Sun River Service District. Uh, we have Debbie Baker oft, next to the wall, our Service District Board Administrator. And behind me is James Lewis, the general manager of the Sun River Owners Association.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you, James. He was our property manager.
And a great supporter of the Sun River Service District.
Yes, he was.
Well, an updated, uh, Sun River Public Safety Building is required to meet the current and future needs of Sun River and the surrounding communities. Uh, our existing facilities right now do not meet industry or safety standards required for professional police and fire departments. Um, the Sun River Service District is requesting from Deschutes County part of the unallocated transient room tax funds to support our public safety building project. Um, the Sun River Police and Fire Departments have significantly increased workloads during high tourist season and is impacted by the, the number of tourists that come to Sun River. Uh, the summer population can peak, up to 20,000 people during, during the summer, requi- necessitating, necessitating a greater level of service than it would be necessary to serve the, the year-round residents in Sun River, which is around 1,200. Now, we're not complaining about tourists in Sun River. It's a, it's a fact of life. And, um, in fact, the tourism in Sun River is what makes Sun River, Sun River. It's, uh, so it's just something, something we, uh, we, we expect and, and deal with. Uh, the current police and fire facilities do not meet, uh, the code requirement for an essential facility, uh, nor the fire protection, National Fire Protection Association standards for best practices. The, um, police facility, um, which is located in an office space next to the SROA Administration Building, um, it is built as an office space and results in inefficiencies and unsafe conditions. DUI and other infractions must be processed and banned, causing police officers to be out of Sun River for extended periods of time. Uh, the fire station no longer meets industry and safety standards regarding equipment storage, decontamination, and living areas. Uh, and also, the new facility, uh, would be available for, uh, Deschutes County Sheriff use, uh, Deschutes County Emergencies, Emergency Management use, uh, you know, as a potential backup EOC or command post, uh, for a large incident in the South County. So it's, it's not just exclusively a Sun River facility. Now, the cost of the project is estimated to be 16 to 18 million dollars. Now, that includes, uh, all soft costs also. So that would be the, the, the total cost of construction. Uh, not in that 16 to 18 million is, uh, building acquisition. Now, the Sun River Owners Association currently owns the fire station. Uh, but with discussions with SROA, we've, they've agreed to transfer ownership of the building to the Service District for a, a very nominal fee. So that's, uh, and we've had the, the building evaluated and it's estimated to be worth 2.4 million dollars. So a significant, uh, contribution to the project from, uh, the Owners Association. Now, in addition, the-
Will that building be torn down?
No. Um, the, the current fire station will be remodeled and it would be added on to it to include the police facilities. So, the police facilities and the Service District offices. So instead of, uh, police and fire being in two separate buildings, they'll be in one.
I did bring my, I, the plans that you gave us last month.
Okay, great.
I just, you know, I was thinking, okay. That's, well, that's good to know that you're remodeling it and you're working it in. Sometimes that work-
We did analysis of a new building versus a remodel, and the remodel at the current location is, uh, far more cost-effective than a brand-new building somewhere else. Even, even the brand-new building at the current location.
Okay, good. It's nice to hear the word "cost-effective."
We're, we're trying. Um, at the same time, the Service District, uh, will be investing 3 million dollars from our reserves. Um, and we'll be asking the Sun River owners to approve at least a 5 million dollar, 10-year capital improvement levy to cover the, the rest of the funding gap. Now, Sun River, John, Sun River generates more than 4 million in annual transient room tax revenue every year, which is about 40 to 50% of the county total. Uh, and since 1999, uh, Sun River has, uh, generated excess of 50 million dollars to the transient room tax fund. Now, transient room tax has been used very effectively to promote tourism. COVA does a marvelous job of getting people to come to Central Oregon and to Sun River. Uh, at the same time, over the last decade, the Sun River Resort, the Sun River Village, and the Sun River Owners Associations have spent tens of millions of dollars improving their facilities for tourism. And all three of those entities have also used their funding to promote tourism specifically to Sun River. Um, but at the same time, since Sun River is 99% built out, uh, the, uh, Sun River Service District can't rely on growth for increased revenue. Uh, we only, our only increase in revenue is from the yearly 3% increase in property taxes. So while these other entities are spending millions of dollars to bring tourists in, the Service District is, uh, limited to the 3% increase. And that's why we're asking for the transient room tax to help us with this project. Now, we are still asking for 10 million dollars of the transient room tax. Uh, we are, as we've, we discussed, and I discussed with the treasurer, we're willing to, uh, look at, uh, taking, taking those, uh, payments over a period of time. I know, Commissioner Chang, you just, uh, mentioned, uh, concern about that. But, um, that's still kind of our position is, uh, we'd like to, you know, at least work with the county in, in kind of spreading, spreading those payments out over, over years, over a number of years. Uh, we'd also like to place a, our capital improvement levy on the May ballot. Uh, the, so, now, the, in order to do that, the Board of Commissioners have to decide by February 9th whether to, uh, allow that to occur. Uh, but before that, uh, we need a commitment from the Board of Commissioners, uh, on the amount of the TRT contributions. You know, it's one of the main variables that we have to determine to establish the levy amount for the project. So it is, it is a, a quick turnaround, I admit. And finally, uh, the Sun River Police and Fire Departments are critically important in protecting the residents and visitors to Deschutes County. Uh, we need an updated facility that will meet the current and future public safety needs for the next 30 to 50 years. Uh, the support of Deschutes County is, uh, required and vitally important to make this necessary project a reality. So again, thank you for your time and attention, and we're certainly willing to, uh, answer any questions you might have.
John, did you want to add anything?
Uh, no, I think Bill's pretty much covered. At one, one point you made about, um, the fact that we are renovating the existing facility, uh, brings the dollar per square foot cost down significantly, um, to recycle an older, uh, building, repurpose it to meet the needs of the fire department, and then add the police station, um, to that so that we can share facilities for additional savings and inspire cooperation between the two departments as well.
I know. I think your community, the police and the sheriffs have been, um, so patient in, um, in this project. And the fact that, you know, you don't even have covered parking for your cars. It's, and I think when we were down there last month, there was a lot of snow on the ground. There was like a foot of snow on the ground. So truly, um, you do, um, you've been very patient, doesn't it?
We, we, the, uh, the snowfall was, was timely. So we've included a picture of, of a, yeah, snow-covered, uh, a police car. And that's, that's kind of the fact of life with the, the police department is-
You know, and also being that we grow from 1,200 to 20,000, um, in the summers, that's 20,000 people from all over the world. And they bring with them their baggage and their issues. And so we're dealing with, um, some major, major, uh, crime issues I won't go into in detail. But we need real facilities, real holding facilities, real interview facilities, um, real, uh, decon- decontamination facilities, uh, to be able to accommodate the tourist load that comes in.
You know, and as mentioned earlier in this, in this meeting, uh, Lepine Fire is struggling to keep up with the demand. Uh, like, like I said, they're trying hard, but they're doing their best. Uh, but there's a lot of Airbnbs, a lot of Verbos in the South County now that impacts Lepine. And Sun River is, Sun River Fire is responding all the time into the Lepine area to, to help out Lepine. So it's not just a, uh, you know, within the fence of Sun River issue. It's a, it's a South County issue that, uh, Sun River Police and Fire act, you know, deal with on almost a daily basis.
Debbie, was there anything that you wanted to add to the comments?
We're good.
Okay. Just wanted to acknowledge that I know you've been part of the team.
Yeah. Um, I wanted to ask about the, the 5 million dollar, 10-year levy that you were proposing as part of your, your overall funding package. Um, do, do you have a sense yet of what kind of terms you're going to get for, um, you know, for that financing?
Well, the, you, you mean for the, the, the public, the, the bank financing we would go after?
Yes.
Uh, yes. Um, and part of the reason the, the Service District wants to take possession of the fire station is that we were eligible then for, uh, tax-exempt loans from public lenders. So, um, that reduces the interest rate considerably to, and we're talking, uh, anywhere from 1.5 to 2.5% interest rate.
Great. That's great.
And part of the reason why we, we want to be able to move swiftly is we want to be able to, to hold those interest rates, uh, because it looks like rates may be going up. Construction costs are going up. Um, the sooner we can get shovel-ready, get in the ground, the more we're going to be able to realize those savings.
You know, and as you've seen from our plans, uh, it's getting, getting to be shovel-ready is, is a phone call away to, to our architects. So we're, we're ready to go as soon as, uh, funding has been secured.
Uh, so if you had to, if you had to, uh, go to a larger number, you know, 8 million, something like that, uh, for, for financing, would you still have access to those pretty favorable rates?
Uh, we would. Uh, the, the challenge then, as, as all of you know, the higher the levy amount you give to voters, the, the chances of, uh, passage always goes down. And that's always the roll of the dice you take. Um, so that's kind of where our, that's, that's the point of view where we're coming from. Um, as of right now, we've done a number of outreach, um, exercises with the public, uh, in person, on Zoom. We've already had at least four tours, public tours of the police and fire facility. Uh, we've had an article since July, uh, every month in the Sun River scene about this project. So we've, we're building momentum for it. Um, right now, you know, keep our fingers crossed and knock on any available wood. There's really been no vocal opposition to the project. So we, we think we're in a good place right now to, uh, to keep this momentum going and, and get this project to, you know, fruition.
Yeah. And, uh, when, when you've done this outreach, have you been throwing out specific dollar numbers or speaking in more general terms with people?
Uh, we've been giving ranges. Cause we're not, right now, we're not able to give a specific dollar amount. Um, we're giving ranges, uh, you know, the, the 16 to 18 million in construction cost. Um, we've given out, um, levy costs depending on the amount from 36 cents per thousand up to, I believe, 56 cents per thousand. So- up to, I believe, 56 cents per thousand. So we've given those kind of ranges and information to the public. And again, there really hasn't been any negative feedback.
So do you actually have 1,200 voters then in Sun River?
I think on the voter rolls, it's like 1,500.
So I like the idea of proceeding, being a partner in this, making a commitment, getting this, you know, built. I mean, it'd be a great facility for a growing area, referring to the whole dynamic of COVID and second homes are turning into primary homes, plus the Vacasa, vacation homes are, are expanding. So it's time, it's time to really invest. Yeah. And then, as I say, as a Board of Commissioners, we'd be the ones voting to get this to a ballot also. So we're, we're on both fronts on this one, that's for sure. I haven't seen any negative response. A lot of people know it's out there, and it'd be a commitment to, to those voters also, you know, commitment by the voters to make that choice. If I throw a number out, I'm thinking maybe the $8 million is the number for Deschutes County, which is, you know, from the, from this unallocated transient room tax fund this year and next year, and the next year is fine, however we might want to do it. But then that gives us, you know, the, the balance of that is a $7 million ask to the, to the residents and voters in the area.
And I did find it fascinating. Mike Myers said that Sun River actually had contributed 2/3 to our TRT when he was the administrator. And in 2019, when I became a commissioner, I'd asked, and it was over 51%. So the number you use today, that 40%, I feel that that is extremely fair for your, your region's contribution to our TRT. Yeah, I would have, I know it's more than 40% since then.
I was going to throw out a starting number more like six or seven million, but I, I'm also very supportive of moving forward with a, in a this year investment and a commitment of future years.
Well, I'm supportive of the 8 million just because I think you look at that historical contribution from Sun River, and I feel like definitely it's time, you've been more than patient, it's time for the county to step up. And remember, Little Harper, Harper Bridge was on our county plan for, since 2012, and we finally got that done in 19, and hopefully it's going to be okay in '22. So I, I'm happy with the 8 million. I don't know if you want, if that's a motion? And is there an allocation that we need to determine today, Greg? If we're, if we're saying eight, do we have to do it per year? How is that best set up so that we're really clear on what, how we're financing our, our portion?
I think, I think so, because I don't think we have eight
Right.
in the balance this year. So that, that will be the important discussion is to have what, what that looks like over the course of two to three years. And we'll then need to coordinate with the district to find out when to authorize putting this on the ballot, if that's the intent of, of the board and of the district.
I mean, can we do three this year and then two, two?
We could, we could propose a four, two and two.
But I don't know if we have four this year, do we not?
That's what I just want to confirm with Greg, is what, what the balance is this year after the commitments?
We can do four this year.
But we just did 600,000.
Start next fiscal year.
I see.
Okay.
And, and I mean, you know, we, we came into this fiscal year with, I, I believe somewhere in the range of six, you know, on, six of unallocated that we are holding. So I, I, you know, I think, I'm pretty confident we could do four.
Four, two and two then. Okay, just want to be clear. All right. Commissioner Devon, do you want to make the motion?
Other dollars that may be in that fund, I think of as, we probably need to start to focus on ourselves and the courthouse project too. So in the next few years, let's think, you know, and I'm just offering this now, we don't have to make a decision, but capital, you know, an X amount out of that fund for our courthouse project in the future. So just an idea I wanted to put out there. But with that, yeah, I'll move $8 million from unallocated transient room tax, 4 million first time around, and then, so I guess it's a commitment to future years. So however you want to say that, $8 million is going to be the total.
And Greg and Dave, is, is there, we can legally structure that so that we make future year commitments?
Yeah, there's a process whereby we can address those future installments in the grant document that we will, that we'll generate. It's not unlike what we have with COVID, insuring them money in future years as well. So it'll take a little bit of work putting something together on that, but we will, I guess for some clarity's sake. So the 4 million would come out of current year budget or budget beginning July 1?
July 1?
The budget that begins this next July 1, and then 2 million, 2 million the following two years.
Can I support that?
With, with that, I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Mr. Devon?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
On behalf of the Sun River homeowners, I want to thank all of you for this great collaboration. Thank you very much.
Thank you for, thank you for taking care of the public safety of your community.
Right. And working together and getting your costs down as much as you can, but, you know, your patience has been to be commended.
Thank you very much.
All right, so. Let's see, who's going to be leading this little project? Okay, Lee.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Lee. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Lee Randall, Facilities Director. Before the board today is document number 2021-999, Contract Amendment with Skanska USA Building for the Guaranteed Maximum Price for the Adult Probate and Probation Expansion on the Public Safety Campus. And with us today are DV Holcomb, should be joining us remotely. In fact, could you go ahead and text Bob?
There she is.
All right. And then Bob Morrow with Skanska USA Building will be, join us online as well here in a minute or so. And then with us in person, we have Chad Young, Project Manager for Skanska, and Jacob Struck, Superintendent. So for our discussion today, DV Holcomb and I will provide a few background remarks, and then Chad Young and Jacob Struck will provide a summary of the GMP amendment. And then we'll have time for any questions that you may have. So beginning the, with the beginning of the project, it began in 2018 with the development of the Public Safety Campus Master Plan. And there were three building projects that, along with parking expansion, that were part of the plan. The centerpiece was the relocation of parole and probation staff and the Community Service Program from the former Programs Building to allow it to be remodeled for the Stabilization Center. Construction of the Stabilization Center and the Community Service Shop are now complete. And the construction of the Adult Probate and Probation Expansion is really the final piece of the 2018 plan. It will provide needed space for the parole and probation staff, as well as allow them to operate out of a single facility on the Public Safety Campus. In early 2020, the board approved a contract for the design of the project with Ascend Architecture, which later became BLRB. And then in April of 2020, the board approved a CMGC contract with Skanska. In May, this past May, the board referred the project to the Facilities Project Review Committee, which provided feedback and support for the project to move forward. And then in November, with design nearly complete, the project was bid out to subcontractors. So at this time, DV Holcomb, Community Justice Director, will provide some background from, from her perspective.
Thank you, Lee. Good morning, everybody. It's still, two minutes till this afternoon. It's nice to be here. Thank you so much. Yeah, I just wanted to, with that kind of overview that Lee provided, give you again an overview of what this project means to us at parole and probation. We are so excited. We are anticipating this renovation with so much enthusiasm. With the relocation of our staff from what is now the Stabilization Center, we are kind of tightly squeezed into the Bend Main Building where this renovation will take place. We're sharing offices. We've partitioned other offices into multiple offices. Tanner and I, the Deputy Director at PNP, are what we affectionately call hot seating his office. We just sort of share that space. We've got a couple staff dispersed to other county locations, and we just cannot wait for a single location to be together as a team, which will help with teamwork, with case coordination. And a couple of other things that it will help with that are very specific to our operations. You know, we really need better, safer, lighter locations to provide some of those high-risk activities that we routinely do at PNP, such as arrests or searches. And this renovation kind of has all of that, which is going to be really great. Another thing that we are unable to provide right now, and because of the pandemic, it's not an urgent issue, but as the pandemic winds down and we can return to in-person group activities, we will be able to conduct group activities again with our clients. Again, if, if we were able to do so due to the pandemic, we would still not be able to do so because we have no more space big enough to allow for group activity. Kind of associated with that, the project is also going to give us back a, one room where all staff can actually fit in one space together for a staff meeting. And then finally, very much in line with kind of what you were just hearing about with the TRT proposals, Deschutes County is a really popular place for public safety agencies in, across the region and across the state to come to have trainings, conferences in, in services. And the space that the renovation will be giving us will allow that to resume, which of course, you know, has that sort of exponential effect of, of tax revenue for the county. So we're really excited. The building just needs some updating. I do just want to give a shout out to working with Lee, with the architect, with Skanska. This has been a very seamless, smooth process despite many different kinds of delays. And with the Facility Review Committee approval, with the great designs that have passed through, with the great, I think, partnership with City of Bend, with permitting, we're really ready to go and really excited. So I, I look forward to today's conversation. And I'm here for any questions that you might have about impacts to operations at PNP.
DV, I just thought it was interesting you used, used the word about remodeling and you were excited. And I'm like, I'm thinking of all the people I know that remodeled, and it always wasn't that exciting. It's, it's usually challenging. But it's, you know, we've been working on this for quite a while. What, 18? It's been four years now. So
Yes.
Thank you, Lee, for your patience.
He's looking forward to the, to the results.
We should be able to mostly stay in our offices during construction. We'll see how that works, and then maybe we can check in on my excitement level at that point. But we are looking ahead and, and my enthusiasm is real.
Well, thank you, DV. And we do have Jacob and Chad from Skanska here today, and they'll go ahead and provide an overview of the project and the GMP process that kind of brings us to today. Are there any questions to this point that anyone may have? Okay, well, I will turn it over to them to introduce themselves. And then we also have the project executive, Bob Morrow, who is joining us via Zoom. So I'll let you gentlemen introduce yourselves.
Yeah, I'll start it off. Jacob Struck, Skanska USA Building. I'm the project superintendent. I've been part of this project since the very beginning for the last two years, and really working with the design team, coming up with a building that is constructable and that meets the budget. So working hand in hand with Ascend, BLRB, and making sure we get off to the right path budget-wise and that the details and the building meet what PNP needs. Really, I'll be here for questions. We want to make it brief to allow you to have enough time to ask us questions. But I'll be on this project through the entire duration, making sure that we give you the best high-quality product possible. Okay?
Chad Young here, Project Manager, responsible for the subcontractor solicitation and bidding. I'll be managing all the subcontracts and budget for the project, as well as just working through the weekly reporting that we'll be providing to Lee and the board.
Thank you.
I'll just take a moment and say thanks, you know, for putting the team together here. It's been quite a, quite a run to get here, you know, displacing from that Stabilization Center building now, getting temporary quarters, having COVID come on, having the hot seating going on by the management even, you know, and having construction people ready to go. You know, how important is it to be able to build something that we have on paper? And this is the moment where we're, we're stepping forward to get it built, you know? So I'm just letting you know, then, you know, I'm real excited about it.
Thank you.
So one thing that, that has worked really well on this project is the CMGC process. And I think Chad has some information that he can share related to how that's worked with our local contractors and subcontractors being involved in kind of the local aspect of the project.
Yeah, we've been doing business here for close to 20 years. This project, we competitively bid every scope of work underneath us, posted the plans to all the plan centers so that everybody that is looking for these types of projects has it available. And then we hand-reached out to close to 300 local trade partners that we've worked with over the years. Great turnout in bidding, a lot of good competitive numbers. As it stands, we're looking at close to 92% of the project dollars going through contractors and people here in town, here local to the area anyways. And yeah, we were, we're very fortunate to, to be able to get to that 92%. That's always one of our biggest goals is to, one, make sure that we're still getting plenty of competitive bids from outside the area, but really getting the qualified local contractors onboard.
And just to back up just a little bit before that, the CMGC process for us has been incredible because we work as a team with the occupants of the building, how they function, the design team, and Lee's team to really give our client, Deschutes County, and the taxpayers, what they need in that building for the best dollar. And the original conceptual design has completely changed from that beginning point with the estimates we're able to provide. And through that process to create a really different building than what we started with, just to make sure we meet that budget and we're giving the best value to the county.
So a question real quick. So I, and this is for Lee and for us. So this is the moment where we kind of know the numbers. Is that what's happening here? Because we know we've had a CMGC partnership, but today is where we say, okay, this is the number that we've kind of landed on to, to start the project, correct?
Yes, it is. So that is the contract amendment that is before the board for approval. And it is, that is the final guaranteed maximum price or GMP. It has some contingencies worked in, which we normally would carry either on the contractor's side or the owner's side. So those are part of that number. And then part of our, our task on the county's project management team and with Skanska is to manage those contingencies and make sure that if issues come up, we're addressing those in the most efficient and cost-effective way possible. So that will be part of the project management process going forward. But from today forward, if the board approves the amendment moving forward, then we likely would have a pre-construction meeting in about two weeks. And we would be looking to mobilize to the site for some early site work in late February, and then the project would move forward from there. Chad or Jacob, do you have a tentative schedule, just a few milestones that you could share?
I do have a question. It says Attachment A dated 4th, January 4th. I think it should be 22, correct? It's on, I'm not sure which page it is on your attachment, but.
Oh, yes.
Did you find it?
Yes, the third page, the executive summary.
Okay, yes. So that should be 22.
Yes, it should be.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry for that. I just, like going, okay, now am I looking at numbers a year ago, and now this is really what it's going to cost us? You know, what has been the increase, do you think?
From our last, our 50% CD budget, we're within 2%.
Okay.
Overall, tracking really well. And that's with subcontractor actual numbers we have in our hands right now, and they're ready to contract.
And it's wonderful to hear that 92% of them are local. So thank you for that. That really means a lot. Sometimes we see outside states even, or, you know, getting the low bid on some projects, and that doesn't seem right. So thanks.
Yeah, we, we want to be Yeah, we, we want to be very competitive on our numbers, especially with public dollars. But in the same token, if we're not able to hire our local subs and make them successful, it's not really worth it. We really focus on reaching out to the local subcontractors.
Right. Well, thank you. Thanks, Chad, for that.
So that's really the extent of what we have formally to share, and we're happy to take any questions that any of the commissioners may have.
Any questions? No questions. Well, we've been waiting for this project to, I'm sure parole and probation's been waiting even longer than we have on a daily basis. So, um, for this project to happen. And it's really great to hear that there's all these different teams that have been working together and, um, getting, going forward. Is there a motion that we could be, have made?
I'll move approval of board signature of document 2021-999, uh, contract amendment to establish a guaranteed maximum price for the construction of the Adult Parole and Probation Expansion Project by Skanska USA Building Incorporated.
And I will second it.
Are there any further questions? Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And Commissioner DeBonne.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And when will we have the ribbon cutting or dig some dirt or something?
We'll, we'll get back to you with a date for that.
Okay, good. No, that would be wonderful.
I didn't want to distract from us getting that business done, but, um, uh, you know, for our, for our guests from Skanska, um, I just wanted to mention, we are, uh, the, the county is currently, uh, taking a look at a community benefits bidding process policy. Um, and one of the things that we need to understand before, uh, we would proceed with that is, uh, whether it will have impacts on, um, you know, our bidding pool. If we are requiring contractors for larger projects, you know, million-dollar or, you know, or larger projects is what they're doing in Lane County. Um, would it, would, uh, you know, from your perspective, would it have impacts on our bidding pool if, if contractors were required to, you know, pre-register with us and, and certify that they, um, are paying living wages, you know, prevailing wage, uh, that they, uh, use apprenticeship programs or they're engaged in apprenticeship programs? And then the third piece, uh, the third requirement that Lane County had in place for their policy was full fa, full family health benefits. So like not necessarily being able to buy out people from, uh, the, the health benefit requirements that come with prevailing wage, but actually, you know, being required to provide the, the, the health benefits. Do you have a, you know, any, any perspective to offer on, you know, kind of what that would do to our contractor pool?
Are, are you specifically, uh, referring to general contractor overseeing or all contractors with, throughout the process?
I am, I'm actually not sure about how that policy works in Lane County, whether, whether that, it, it kind of flows down through all the, all the subs or, or whether it's, uh, just a, you know, but, um, I, what I do know is that it's, it's, you know, large contracts over a million dollars. So.
This is Bob Morrow. Um, I'm project executive with Skanska, and thank you, everybody, for your time. Commissioners, appreciate being here today, and thank you for approving, um, this great project. Um, Commissioner Chang, I, I, I believe what, um, the community benefits, you were correct, it does umbrella down and, and include subcontractors in that as well.
In Lane County?
In, in the Lane County, yes. Um, you know, the, um, we would have to research that a little bit and, and, um, see how that would apply to Deschutes County and what, what that would do to, um, the pool of contractors locally. Um, my, my guess is, um, there, there would probably be some impacts associated with it, just, just a gut. But I, you know, to give you a, a solid answer, I'd like to look at it, um, a little more and, and kind of go through our list of the major subcontractors we have in the area.
Well, that, that's work outside of your contract. So I, I mean, I don't want to ask you to do it extra work. I was, you know, if you just had a, a feel, like I, you know, like a, a sense for that question, it would be, it'd be great to get your perspective.
Yeah. Um, and, and if it's something that's come in, um, it's, it wouldn't, you know, it's, it's work we need to be prepared for anyways, just to, to be ahead of it. Um, but my gut would still be then that it, it would be a, there'd probably be some subcontractors that would not meet that requirement, would be my guess. And then, you know, what, what is our, you know, how could we help them meet those requirements? What education and training we could provide to get them onboard? So I, I don't think it's, um, a, um, you know, a, a showstopper. I think there might be some training and education involved to help them get there.
Great. Thank you. And do you, do you think that the, um, uh, the, the kind of shortfall, I guess, at this moment would be more on the health benefits end or on the apprenticeships end?
You know, I, I had a meeting this morning with East Cascade Works and, um, you know, I know they're doing a lot of great work with the apprenticeship programs and, and trying to get, um, more and more in central Oregon. Um, I, I think that would, that would probably be, um, the biggest challenge, would be my, my hunch. Um, you know, we're, and there, and there's also a piece, I, I didn't hear you say it, but I'm sure Lane Community College is also, or Lane County is also applying, um, diversity, equity and inclusion goals as well. Um, and I know that's something that's also, um, you know, we're, we're working to get ramped up in central Oregon as well and trying to create some subcommittees to help, um, again, with training, education and getting some certified subcontractors in the community.
Well, I, I hadn't heard that Lane County had a, a diversity, equity, inclusion component of their community benefits bidding process. But, um, you know, those three pieces we mentioned, or I mentioned, that those are the, were the, the key pieces that, um, that I was tracking. But, yeah, thank you so much for that perspective.
Yeah. And, uh, just to answer specifically on apprenticeships, our licensed trades, plumbers and electricians are required by the state regardless of being union or non-union to go through an apprenticeship. Um, we are lacking more in the carpenter trades and, uh, Skanska has been partnering with, um, COCC, uh, Kirby Nagelhut, Sunwest Builders on different programs. They started up one two years ago at COCC, uh, and then another one has started up this year of Hard Hat in Hand with, uh, Fortis and a couple other ventures. So they're really working hard and expanding that. There's not a lot of opportunities for some of the other trades to be part of apprenticeship in central Oregon.
Right, right. So we could, we, we could drive that to, to a, a little bit by, by adding an apprenticeship requirement. That's helpful to understand. Thank you.
I know. I'm accumulating, um, letters from the community on supporting this. I have like this many, and I'm going to send them, you know, um, a back copied email when, but I do want to hear from the other side of it. And, you know, would, would this implementation cost in Deschutes County? Would it cost, would it cost this project if it, let's say it was next year, it was going to get approved and we did this? Would it cost an extra, uh, you know, half a million dollars? Um, what, you know, what are the costs when we do something like this? And is there that big of an impact? So I appreciate, Bob, your comments this morning.
Yeah, understanding, understanding how this, how a policy like this might translate into a smaller pool of bidders and, and how that might translate to higher prices, it's, 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 uh, definitely something we need to think through. So thank, thank you so much for your insights.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So last item on our agenda is the Thornburg Destination Resort. Whether to hear the appeals or not.
Uh, we've got, uh, good morning, commissioners. For the record, Will Groves. Uh, we've got Angie Brewer here on Zoom who will be giving the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Angie.
Apologies, I was just elevated to panelists and cut out for a second, so I might have missed my, my introduction there. Um, uh, good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, this is Angie Brewer, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. Thank you for having us. I know you're, um, you're running long and we'd probably like this to be as brief as possible, but, um, we're here today to share with you an opportunity to hear two, uh, two appeals to the Board of Commissioners related to the Thornburg Destination Resort. And if it's all right, I'm going to, um, share my screen. There's a couple of corrections to our PowerPoint today, so I'll share my screen. And just in, just in case you haven't had a chance to peruse it or anyone in the audience is interested in taking a look, there is a board-facing website publicly accessible with the record materials for both of these cases and all of their associated appeal numbers. So, and I'm going to leave it in this mode, if that's okay, to kind of prompt me in this, in my presentation. But, um, there are two, two cases before you that have been appealed. And again, this is a, this is for your consideration as to whether or not you'd like to hear it. There are draft orders prepared, and we will need two separate motions for the two separate orders. So just, just so that's clear. The first, um, the first thing I'd like to do is, uh, go through the, um, on a high level, a quick summary of the resort and, and bring back some slides that you saw last time I was here before you, and just to kind of give you a refresher and make sure everybody's working from the same level of information regarding, uh, what the resort is, where it is, and, um, status of other appeals. So just briefly, um, this is a slide you've seen before. The resort is, uh, comprised of nearly 2,000 acres located, um, between Redmond and Sisters, just on the backside of Eagle Crest. The application was originally received in 2005, and the conceptual and final master plans have previously been approved, um, litigated and approved, um, by prior boards and, uh, hearings bodies. And in case anyone would like a refresher on any of the timelines, we do have this slide. I'm not going to linger on it. This is the timeline for some of those, um, more pertinent cases and litigation dates. So the first case, um, before you is file number 24721-00508SP. And the associated appeal numbers there are 849A, which was the appeal to the hearings officer, and 1115A, which is the appeal to the board. Both appeals were submitted by Enzioata Gould, and I have a slide, um, uh, after this one that outlines the reasons for that appeal. The quick note I want to make here is that in my prior version of this PowerPoint, this date was a February date, and we went back and checked all of our mapping clocks this morning, just to be absolutely sure. And I confirmed that the date is actually March 9th, the statutory deadline for our local decision. So the full appeal document is included in the packet and online, but just briefly, there are 12 reasons cited by Ms. Gould for her appeal to the board. Um, and I'll just run through them quickly. Uh, there's a concern that the site plan is inextricably linked with the review of the Phase A1, um, approval, which is on appeal before Luba. There are concerns regarding the law of record status, there are concerns regarding compliance with Final Master Plan Conditions 10 and 38, Phase A1 Condition 17, Final Master Plan Condition 21, Conditions 28, and relatedly Conditions 38 and 39. The Final Master Plan Condition 38, water rights concerns continue to be a, a topic of concern. She cites, uh, Destination Resort requirements of County Code, um, Chapter 18, that 113.060. And has concerns regarding the applicant's requested Corrections 1 and 2, and then ultimately, uh, concerns regarding the hearings officer's conclusions and final decision. So the board has several options. Um, you can choose to, uh, hear the appeal in a, in a variety of forms, um, whether it's de novo, partial de novo or on the record, or can choose to decline to hear the appeal. Um, we provided draft orders. And, uh, I have Will Groves here with me to help us walk through some of the timelines and some con, some context for the board's consideration as to, um, which path they would pursue. Staff is ultimately recommending that the board decline to hear the appeal, um, simply based on, oh, and you can see I have, I still have an old date in here, um, that should be March 9th. There, there's very limited time for the board to make it through the entire hearings process and allow for staff to accommodate, um, the decision writing process. So with that, I'll pause briefly and let Will fill in some of that information before we move on to the next, the next appeal.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Again, for the record, Will Groves, Planning Manager. Wanted to update you. We've, uh, looked at the record in consultation with legal and wanted to confirm that the 150th day, in an abundance of caution, we're going to view that as February 12th for the time being. There was some ambiguity in the prior hearing. And, uh, for the, to ensure that we have a proper process here, for the time being, we're assuming that 150th day is, we're back at February 12th. Had to review some video this morning and hadn't had a opportunity to coordinate with Angie, uh, following that. So, uh, you are being asked this morning if you would, this afternoon, if you'd like to hear an appeal in these matters. Uh, one thing that's unusual about this is the very compressed timeline to hear that, to, if you did want to engage with that. Um, we're late in the clock here. The 150th day is coming up soon. Uh, we prepared two orders for you. One of them is to decline to hear the matter. Uh, the second provides an opportunity to hear the matter, what's called on the record. And so it appears that there's a very compressed timeline that would allow an on-the-record hearing in this matter. And that would be one where no new evidence was presented to you. You would receive additional written legal arguments and asked to be make a decision on that matter in very short order. Uh, as, as you consider that matter, one of the things that we want to caution is that that would be, the time left to do that is, we're really at the theoretical minimum for that. We'd be looking to admin for some waivers of the requirement for when materials need to be uploaded to the board's packet. The amount of material that you're going to be asked to engage with is substantial. Um, the, uh, the record is on the card over there. And, uh, additionally, the hearings officer in these matters, it was a five-hour hearing that went to 11:00 PM. So there are significant, um, the, the volume of material with which you would be expected to engage and make a decision on is significant during this timeline. That said, it is theoretically possible. And we have Adam Smith, uh, with us here in Zoom. Want to see if Adam has anything to add to this as, uh, you consider this matter.
Oh, so Will, just to confirm, you just moved that date back to February 12th?
Back to February 12th.
Okay. All right. That's what I thought you said.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, good morning. Well, I guess we're in the afternoon now. Commissioners, Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. Just, uh, uh, echo some of Will's sentiments. Uh, it is theoretically possible. Uh, it would be a very compressed timeframe. And unfortunately, with those compressed timeframes, there's always, uh, increased legal risk to the county. Uh, if we're not able to make the 150-day shot clock deadline, then the applicant will have an opportunity to file a writ of mandamus. And if we lose in those proceedings, attorney fees can be attached. And then, of course, whenever we're trying to, uh, hurry up, especially, uh, complicated, well, in this case, two complicated land use decisions, we run the risk of running, uh, or, or having mistakes in that final decision, increasing our chance of a, a remand and/or reversal in front of the, the Land Use Board of Appeals. Um, so yes, theoretically possible, but, um, it is a very tight schedule and there are, uh, difficulties that come with trying to, uh, do even an on-the-record review in such a compressed timeframe.
And so both.
As always, it's the board's decision and staff will bend over backwards to help you achieve your goals. And of course, we're always here to answer additional questions if you want to get into the details of the schedule we've penciled out or anything else.
Um, and both of them are on the February 12th date, that the local, um, final local has to be made by that date?
That is correct.
Okay, so.
And that's the best information we have available at this point. As well noted, there's a little bit of ambiguity. Uh, we've tried to coordinate with the applicant and, and they said they needed more time to see if they concur that they consented to an open record period or not. So as of right now, the best information we have is that February 12th would be the, uh, the deadline for making the decision.
Uh, so one observation, I mean, this is a pretty mature application. Uh, it's been through a lot of, uh, uh, back and forth in the Luba. So, and these appeals are, are, you know, really pointed. Uh, and we have had some input from community members asking us, uh, you know, specific things about this topic. But, uh, yeah, I don't see, I don't support hearing it at this time. I would rather see it get to the state level for that, uh, you know, next critical legal review, uh, and, uh, you know, go from there.
And more than likely, it would go there irregardless of what we, our decision. Isn't that what Adam would say?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes.
There are dedicated parts.
How many appeals is this now, like 32 or 34 or something?
We're over 40.
Over 40?
I thought it was over 50.
Oh, really? Okay, all right.
I do have some questions, and they may be questions that we can unpack and discuss right now, or they might be the basis for me being interested in hearing the appeal. And the matter that's before us right now is, if I understand correctly, it revolves around the guest lodging to residences ratio. And I would like to understand more about when state policy changed, and what the applicant, Thornburg, had committed to prior to, you know, prior to that state policy change. And this is more, more a concern about, I have more of a concern about our state's destination resort policy broadly than about this specific application, but, you know, my understanding is that, you know, when we look at the history of destination resorts, that the goal was to provide a visitor-based economic development opportunity to rural, economically distressed communities. And I don't think we can argue that we are that anymore at this point, or probably not even at the point when Thornburg originally filed for this project. And if, you know, if the goal was, if the goal of destination resorts was to provide opportunities for visitor-based, you know, economic development in rural, economically distressed communities, the change at the state level of the policy, you know, the reduction of the ratio of guest lodging needed, it seems like basically, one could interpret that to basically be saying, you know, this is an opportunity, now that we're converting this more to an opportunity for you to just build a rural subdivision somewhere if you feel like it. And I, you know, I don't think that that's appropriate. I think that we, you know, that's sort of an end run around the state land use planning system to allow people to build rural subdivisions. So I'm interested in seeing, you know, the guest lodging requirement maintained at, you know, the higher level, but I want to know, I want to understand whether that is really the heart of what we're talking about here, or whether that is, you know, we're in technicalities about other things that, you know, that's not what the heart of this appeal is about.
Commissioner Chang, if I may just clarify, the first of the two items today is not change to the ratio, that's the second item. The change to the ratio was under file, file number 553 and 920 and 1116. That's, we'll talk about that next, but this first item is the, is a proposed 80 units of overnight lodging that was required by the master plan initially. So it's implementation of a requirement that existed in the law at the time of the application, if that helps.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Peter.
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the Commission, for the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. Angie, thank you for clarifying, there are two matters before the board today. One is a site plan originally proposed for 80 overnight lodging units, consistent with the master plan. And the second matter, which gets to Commissioner Chang's question about a modification of conditions to the conceptual and final master plans as it pertains to overnight lodging units, what's being proposed is to change the ratio for the number of overnight lodging, the overnight lodging unit ratio for, as it pertains to single-family dwellings, that the current ratio is two and a half to one, two single-family dwellings, one has to build one overnight lodging units. To change that to two and a half to one, and then the number of weeks available per calendar year is being modified from 45 weeks to 38 weeks. And for context, this was a change in state law right around 2010, 2011, 2012 approximately. We have four destination resorts in Deschutes County. We have Eagle Crest, Tetheroe, Pronghorn, and Caldera Springs. All four of them went through a modification of conditions to take advantage of this change in state law, and I just want to give you the dates for that. So as it pertains to changing the weeks available minimum during the calendar year, Eagle Crest did a text amendment, they had to go through it, they were subject to special circumstances, given their overnight lodging unit obligations. That was in 2016. Tetheroe performed their modifications of conditions in 2013. Pronghorn did it in 2013. Caldera Springs did it in 2013. Concerning the overnight lodging unit ratio from two to two and a half to one, Eagle Crest did it in 2016 through that text amendment. Tetheroe and Pronghorn did it in 2013, and Caldera Springs did it in 2015. And so it just gives you context, Commissioner, in terms of with the change in state law, lowering those requisite requirements, that all four destination resorts took advantage of that and are implementing it as we speak.
Are we legally required to lower those thresholds for a destination resort, or, you know, to then track to current state law, or is it, are we, you know, if we've set conditions earlier, is it legally, are we legally allowed to continue to require what, that prior commitment?
That, I mean, ultimately, it's a policy determination, I believe, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. It was, as Thornburg is proposing, they're trying to take advantage of a change in state law that their potential competitor, if they're ever vested, that their competitors are utilizing. It's important to note on the record that Deschutes County annually manages the resorts, these four destination resorts, overnight lodging unit responsibilities. They're required to submit an annual report. Actually, we will get their reports in just a couple of weeks, and then we produce an annual report that we share with the Board of County Commissioners to demonstrate how they're meeting their requisite requirements. But ultimately, you know, Davey, you could correct me if I'm, you know, wrong, but I think it's a policy consideration by the Board of County Commissioners to determine if that respectful modification request remains consistent with their master plans and remains consistent with state law.
If I might jump in here, the, in 2013, we updated our code to match the state law, and that's why you see that wave of changes in 2013. And in this case, the applicant's requested a modification to take advantage of that code. That's something that we make regularly available to applicants of all sorts, so if they were subject to something previously more restrictive, and the restrictive, and the restrictive code has been removed, it's real common for applicants to ask to take advantage of that. And in this case, the hearings officer, the, that, our ability to approve or deny that change, generally speaking, is hitched to a question of if the, one, has there been a change in circumstances, two, is this a substantially new proposal? So is this something that's going to have additional impacts on neighbors? So, you know, for example, if rules have become more restrictive, but there was a particular circum, less restrictive, but there was a particular circumstance that would result in significant neighbor impacts by relaxing those rules at that point, there's an opportunity to say that either this is a significantly new proposal, or that neighbors are going to be affected in some way. And as the hearings officer evaluated that, this, what is anticipated here is they're allowed to produce less, fewer of these overnight units. And so in the hearings officer analysis, the anticipated impacts associated with that to neighbors was persuasive to him that that criteria was met. Certainly, if the board heard this, they would be at their discretion to evaluate that, but wanted to give you a little background on how that was evaluated before the hearings officer.
And I'll just piggyback on that. Pronghorn initiated the text amendment to take advantage of the ratio as just provided by Will. That was done, they initiated that in 2013. Tetheroe, the destination resort that's west of Bend, is subject to a different zoning title, and so they respectfully amended the code in 2013 as well to take advantage of that same ratio. But as Will noted, it's now codified in both titles 18 and 19.
So we need to handle each one of these individually, correct?
Correct. Would you like to see the slides for the second? The second, they're not super detailed, but if you'd like to see the rest of the PowerPoint, I think.
Sure, that'd be fine, Angie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, so we had previously talked about 508, which was the overnight lodging units themselves, and 553, and the associated appeal members here, was the change to the ratio and the number of weeks, as Director Gatawski described. Ms. Gould filed Appeal 920-A to the hearings officer, and Appeal File 1116A to the hearings officer's decision to become Board of Commissioners, requesting a de novo hearing. Reasons cited in her appeal application was an objection to the goalpost rule, raised at her waiver concerns, law of record issue, substantial change to the final master plan condition number one, arguments submitted by Judge Lipscomb, conditions of approval concerns, and ultimately, the conclusions and decision of the hearings officer. Again, same slide here, change the date back for the accuracy of our discussion. There are options before the board to hear or decline the appeal, and again, we do have draft orders available.
Angie, can I jump in for a quick minute?
Of course.
Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. I just wanted to remind the board, of course, what you're well aware of, any of those issues that are raised by the appellant that are rooted in state statute, or are rooted in both Deschutes County Code and also state statute, is an area where the board unfortunately does not receive deference from the Land Use Board of Appeals. It's the only time that we receive deference is if it is entirely a matter of Deschutes County Code and an interpretive matter of Deschutes County Code. Otherwise, a number of the, I bring that up because a number of those issues are likely going to be decided again by the Land Use Board of Appeals if this appeal proceeds.
Thank you, Adam. Commissioner DeBonne, do you have any further questions?
No, so as I say, I've been through a cycle of this over the years, being in office now, and this is kind of that narrow path, that we could lay it all out in front of us as a board, but I think these are kind of statewide answers to make sure this application, and as I say, I think of it as a software developer, make sure the application compiles and fits with all the rules and regulations at the local code and the state law. But yeah, the professionals at Luba would be the authority on this at this time, and our hearings officer, who put these already through a very, very fine critique process. So as I say, I'm supportive. I'll move order denying, I guess I'll make sure I'm the right one here, so 2022-002, an order denying review of hearing officer decision on file number 247211115A, and 24721849-A, and 24721-508SP.
Is there a second?
I mean, I'm, you know, the question I raised about, about, you know, relaxing the guest lodging ratio, basically, you know, making a, making the pathway for a destination resort become essentially the pathway, you know, an end run around the state land use planning system for you to build a rural subdivision. I am really concerned about that issue, but I don't, I don't necessarily see this as a, you know, hearing this appeal as being, you know, a vehicle to explore that. So yeah, I will second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So.
And second item?
And then there's the.
Sorry. I'll do the motion for the second item, move approval of order number 2022-003, an order denying review of hearing officer's decisions, decision on file number 24721-1116A, 24721920A, and 24721553-MC.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Yes, and the Chair votes yes. And will you let us know when that date is actually determined? I mean, it's, it's a bit amazing that, you know, is it really February, or is it March? So.
I can certainly follow up with that. I don't know if you'll get a good answer. Because the board has chosen not to act on this, it'll actually, it's likely that it'll never need to be formally determined.
Right.
If the board had chosen to engage, I'm sure it'd be a matter over which would have been fought bitterly. So we may, we may never get a formal answer on that one.
Okay, thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And Angie, thank you so much, and.
Thank you.
Yes, and best wishes in your position in the future.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yeah. And thank you, Adam, for laying out the legal risks of hearing this for us.
So, do we need to come back this afternoon? Should we do other items now? Do we have anything executive?
Nothing for executive session. I just have two brief other items, but.
Okay.
Just the first is, we will prepare a press release for the TRT decisions that the board made today. In fact, we already have a media inquiry about that, so that we'll coordinate with you to issue that, and then I assume another press release for today's ARPA allocation. So one is just to be prepared for a couple of press releases that we'll be working on this afternoon. And then the second question is, Commissioner DeBonne had suggested we have a work session to discuss the joint office on homelessness prior to our joint meeting with the city of Bend on January 28th, and the question is when to have that. We discussed it, but he has suggested potentially next week on the 19th, however. Commissioner Chang may not be able to attend that meeting, so I just want to get a sense from the board. We do have capacity now on Monday, January 24th. We were going to have continued TRT discussions that afternoon. Without that, we could discuss it then, but I really wanted to turn it over to the board to decide when to have that.
January 24th, sounds fine, doesn't it?
Okay.
You can be there at that meeting?
That would work for me, yeah. And I was going to mention during other items that I will not be available for the Board of Commissioners' meeting on January 19th. And I sort of put that forward to Nick a little earlier and asked him to kind of track agenda, potential agenda items for me to make that as okay as possible.
So if I can just confirm, Commissioner DeBonne, does that work for you as well?
Yes, and the vision there is just, you know, just like we kind of ran across today, just practice using the words and the vision about the scope of what we're even talking about, so that's what I'm thinking.
Great, thank you. We'll plan to conduct the work session then on the 24th. Thank you. That concludes my other items.
Oh, I did want to ask if any of the other Commissioners were going to go to the Fair Association Dinner next Monday night? They sent a notice out, it said save the date, but really, it was the invitation. I don't know if you saw it. I didn't really see it. And that is Monday night. I believe it starts at 5:00, dinner's at 6:00. So at the, at the fair.
No, thank you very much for a reminder. No, thank you very much for reminding. That's wonderful. I did not have that on my schedule, and I was on a roll. I was able to attend that as a Grange member in Lapine years before I even became a commissioner, so it's really a long history of that great Fair Association and their annual dinner.
Okay, so if you can let somebody know, they're actually supposed to be making phone calls to a few people to just check in and make sure that everyone got the invitation.
Yeah, no, I didn't receive an invitation, and.
I did go to their meeting Monday night, and, oh, the wonderful news is Roxy's going to be the rodeo director. She was there, Roxy, who just retired from twenty years of Deschutes County, and now she's going to be a phenomenal volunteer and share the rodeo. So that was nice to see, and, you know, they're submitting to the board, they seem like they're pretty much on track.
Great. All right. I can offer one other item. You know, as my fellow commissioners know, we own a whole bunch of land in the Newberry neighborhood in Lapine, and one of the things that I learned was that there was provisions made with the city to include a wildlife corridor. You know, the preliminary in the comp plan, they preliminarily kind of just stuck a little placeholder in there between Sections three and Section four. But after talking with people from ODF and W and ODOT about, you know, vehicle wildlife collisions, deer, you know, basically people hitting deer, and all the work that those two state agencies are doing together to try to make, you know, reduce the number of vehicle wildlife collisions, I learned that there's actually, right through the middle of the Newberry neighborhood, there is, there's kind of a very regular, very heavily used mule deer wildlife migration corridor between winter range and summer range. And so since we already have this idea, you know, there's already like a placeholder on the map to have a wildlife corridor through there, there's an opportunity to both, like, optimize the placement of that, you know, somewhere in Section three or Section four, not necessarily the spot where they just stuck the placeholder in, and B, to do, you know, to try to pair it with an undercrossing of Highway ninety-seven and potentially seek funding for that. So Representative Ken Helm is actually running a bill this short session to try to allocate five million dollars of state general fund to wildlife crossing projects. And, you know, so I think it would be really exciting to pair these two, well, to pair a wildlife undercrossing and this migration corridor through the Newberry neighborhood. That would be really exciting in and of itself. But if we could support and advocate for that legislative concept from Representative Helm, there's even an opportunity for us to grab some dollars potentially for that project. And Deschute, our section of Highway ninety-seven has the highest number of these wildlife crossings, you know, safe crossings in the state of Oregon. So we, you know, our community essentially has a lot of success with, you know, presenting the need for these projects and identifying funding and getting it done. And it's, it has actually already had, you know, after talking to the ODOT wildlife biologist, has had a huge impact already in terms of reduced vehicle collisions and mortalities, well, deer mortalities, having some of these projects. So just, you know, something that I've started to explore. And gave the city the heads up as well. I've been talking to the president of the council, Colleen Scott, about this, and she was going to raise it with the full council.
Well, the Sisters Nugget actually had an article about the mule deer population decline and said that mountain lions, cougars, their main source of nourishment was the mule deer. So the fact that the state's mule deer population has increased so tremendously, I think that's something else to think about. And in fact, Sunday, I saw a bald eagle eating a deer that had been hit by the side of the road right bound down from my house. There was a bald eagle there with the crows. So, I mean, I was like, wow. And the crows, of course, immediately came back, and the bald eagle said, oh, no. So anyhow, but no, I think we have to think about the cougar population, and it is increasing. The estimates I'm hearing is like up to ten thousand. And I know if you Google it, you could see that at one point in time, I think it was three thousand.
Well, you know, I'd be delighted to get the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife in here to give us, you know, a more comprehensive picture of what the factors are in the decline of the mule deer population locally.
Well, that was an article, Jim Cornelius actually wrote that story, and as far as that their numbers are going down and in the relationship with mountain lions, so.
Yeah, I mean, the way that you phrased that, I wasn't sure whether it was a concern that, you know, mule deer are the main thing that mountain lions eat, which.
Right.
Know, and so the decline of the mule deer population means that we're also going to see a decline in the cougar population.
I think they're saying.
Whether you were trying to say that that's the causal.
Well, I think it's, besides traffic, I think it's the cougars are killing more deer if that's their main source of food.
Mountain lions definitely kill and eat deer, but I'm pretty sure that that's not the main reason that we're seeing a collapse of the mule deer population locally.
Okay, any other?
Another note. I was able to talk with Speaker of the House Tina Kotek, who's going to be resigning her seat, like, at the end of the week or something like that, but I had scheduled a meeting with her, remember, a couple of months ago, after AOC, I was able to go to Portland and see her in her district, and I really was learning about the Joint Office of Homeless Outreach from Portland and Multnomah County. And so this was the follow-on meeting for that, and I mentioned campgrounds, you know, what is the possibility of campgrounds, the land use associated with it, right outside of UGB of a city, having that buffer, that shock absorber for housing, you know, the swap space for people that are just looking for that next place to be. So she mentioned that, yeah, she could provide a warm handoff for a person that may be taking her seat or whatever's going to happen, but it was a good meeting this morning for about a half hour on the video, just kind of laying that concept out there. Not a mature concept yet, but it's an idea that could get something, even in this short session, you know, even if it gets her, you know, just some ideas. We could do something from Deschutes County's point of view.
Oh, I did have a conversation yesterday morning, it was on my calendar for maybe two months. Travis Madinma, I believe, who has a house in Redmond, and he's state fire marshal, he's in that group, but you guys, we remember the email we just got about the gas stations, the attendance, and I'm seeing a gas station insisters that their attendants are not always there, and then I just actually went to one in Redmond yesterday, and so Travis was able to forward my questions to someone who, that's his department, and just wanted to say that we need legislation in order to give a temporary fix to the fact that we don't have enough employees here, and Deschutes County, Klamath County, and Yumitella County on this side of the mountain all are impacted by the rule that we have to have attendants at the gas station putting in the gas, and yet, you know, the workforce is so diminished. So send an email on, and hopefully, some kind of a temporary fix can happen so that the stations aren't fined five hundred dollars a day. It doesn't, you know, what do you do when you're down to two employees? And you've, you know, it would be really frightening for the people I know that drive around and their gas tank is on empty, and then they start looking for gas. So remember, we did have gas stations that weren't getting because of the snow, they couldn't get over the pass to fill up the stations, so there's all those things that are happening at this moment.
I didn't totally track that. Are you, are you saying that the state fire marshal's office has authority over gas station, like attendee?
Right.
Requirements?
Yes, there's a division of it in the state fire marshal. And, yes, so this morning at eight, I actually talked to that person, Mark, and he was, you know, they don't like to fine people, but it's truly, it's becoming a bigger problem all over our county. I'm not sure about Klamath or Yumitella, but it's truly, I'm seeing it all over our county where nobody's working, and it does go through the state fire marshal. It is under state code, and like the gentleman that sent us the email Monday afternoon said, you know, I don't want to stop this, I believe in having a full service station, but just right now, if we could just have a temporary fix so that he could maintain the gas stations, and then when we're back into higher numbers of available attendance, that, you know, that goes away, and people, we have our service again. I mean, it's really, it gives a lot of people a job, and the unfortunate thing is, right now, we don't have as many people that can do that job.
It does, it does, it does create jobs, but, I mean, yeah, at this moment in time where, you know, we have a need for workforce, like, across the whole economy, it, you know, it certainly strikes me as a place where, you know, we could relax that requirement and free up some workers to go to places where they are fundamentally needed, because, you know, for thirty-five years of my life, I lived in places where I could pump my own gas. And, you know, I didn't see any safety issues or anything else associated with that, so I, you know, I would support, you know, I would support any kinds of efforts to create that kind of flexibility and free up some of those workers. I have to say, you know, you know, gas station attendant, like, it's also, it can't be good for your long-term health, sucking gas fumes all day. So, you know, giving those people, you know, freeing up workers to go work somewhere else in a worker's job market right now, I, you know, I think that's a great idea.
Anyway, it is, yeah, we're only one of two states, New Jersey's the other one, that doesn't allow it, and there are fourteen counties, I believe, in Oregon that they can pump their own because their population is under forty thousand. So that's, but it is through the state fire marshal.
Probably would make gas cheaper for everyone, too.
Perhaps. That could be good, considering what was, the inflation rate today was like seven percent, so, yes. Is there any other business for the day? Are we good?
I mean, I just wanted to circle back to what Commissioner DeBonne was saying about private campgrounds. I, and I'm going to raise this during goal-setting next week, but I am very interested in exploring that five-hundred-acre property that we own, that the county owns just north of town, you know, about a mile and a quarter north of Cooley, as a potential park and campground. It's a park designated already, but we have, you know, no county commission that, as far as I'm aware of, since the county commission that designated it as park has done anything to kind of, you know, make that a reality. And there are numerous counties around the states that run county campgrounds and county parks, and, you know, find those to be very, you know, very financially lucrative, not just, you know, revenue neutral, but revenue positive for the county. So we could be providing a needed and desired recreational service and amenity in our community and, you know, and potentially, you know, making earnings and revenue from it. And then if the legislature wants to create a little bit of flexibility about, around emergency shelter in campgrounds, then we could conceivably use those campsites during the, and, you know, RV sites during the winter months as a, you know, as a shelter opportunity, safe parking opportunity, something like that.
Okay, great. With that, the meeting's adjourned. Sorry we ran an hour late. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Commissioner DeBonne.